The first item on our agenda is citizens' comments. Shanay, do we have residents that would like to speak?
Yes, sir, we do. Citizen comments provide the opportunity for citizens to address council items that are listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and I will let you know when one minute is left. Please state your name and address. Priority comments, a professional presentation, is requested. Our first speaker is Laura Anderson, and our second speaker is Philip Crawford.
It's on, so you know I have to push the button. My name is Laura Anderson, and I live at 3728 Pocatello Street. And good afternoon, especially to you. I'm so glad that you're here. I'm excited to be here, gentlemen. Your opportunities abound. I'm here because of the homeless presentation in your bracket, and I'm offering my help. You see, I have a doctorate in homelessness. I've spent the last 25 years of my life solving homelessness and behavioral health issues. As the municipal judge, for the last 14 years, I was responsible for preventing future harm from those who happened to end up in jail, including those who suffered from mental illness, alcohol, and drug addiction. I presided over the Opportunity Docket, where people were given community service for seeking behavioral health services, alcohol and drug issues, and obtaining housing and employment. The successes were astounding GEDs, jobs, housing, all became within the reach of opportunities to succeed. We would tell them, if you get better, our community gets better. Gentlemen, we are only as good as our weakest link. Since October, I've been volunteering with many helping hands. God has given me the opportunity to continue to change people's lives by taking them to Social Security Office, helping them resolve citations and warrants, and convincing them, and taking them to receive behavioral health assessments and medication. Here's where Irving needs your help. I would ask you stop sending money to Dallas to solve our challenges. We're in a desperate need of social workers to provide opportunities to direct those with homelessness challenges. I know you've allocated $162,000 to provide for those caseworkers, but that went to Housing Forward, and Housing Forward is now soliciting for someone to provide those services from agencies here in Irving. Not sure why we can't directly give an organization in Irving that money, but I happened to be down at the County Commissioners Court on April 1st, and the leadership of Housing Forward was down there talking about the massive amounts of money they are requesting from the county and the city of Dallas. I can assure you, we are not their number one priority. We can do a better job. Mayor, I heard your frustrations. We certainly have some challenges in downtown, but stopping people from feeding and issuing criminal trespass warnings is not the answer. The answer includes, first, identifying the real issues, finding those who are already contributing. There are a myriad of reasons for someone to be homeless, but there are just as many opportunities to solve the problem. I know your homeless diversion task force was dissolved, but could we please try again? I, along with others, are committed to solving this devastating problem. Desmond Tutu said it is not enough to keep pulling people out of the river. We must go upstream and find out why they are falling in. On the wall of Centennial Park, it says Irving, Texas, where people are the difference. Let us be the light for others to follow. It starts with inviting all to the table and get to work. Thank you. Call me.
Philip Crawford.
My name is Philip Crawford. I live in Irving, 3900 Rockton Road. I got trespassing wanted over Miggity's. I was helping this lady out for her wagon in Miggity's. She was running, and I was helping her out. And the manager called the police on the other people, and the manager didn't tell me her name. And the police told us Lee, and he put trespass warning on me and her. I was helping her out. It was running Monday, and she asked me to help her out. I did. And they put trespass warning on me. I didn't do nothing wrong. I was helping her out. She asked me. I was helping her out. I was helping her out. I love helping. I love helping people out with Helping Hands. I do Helping Hands on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and I go Thursday night fee at Thursday night at Bear Creek Church. I love helping them out, Helping Hand. I love help Pastor Webb out at his church, and I love helping people out with Helping Hands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all?
Chris, we have the city update.
Yes, sir, we have two. We'll do Last Month on ICTN and then an update on our new city websites.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. April Riley, Director of Communications, pleased to present to you the Last Month on ICTN for May.
Your ICTN team produced 52 videos in the month of May.
In 100 years, none of us will be here, but hopefully my great-great-grandchildren will say, oh, yeah, that was Jackie Town.
It's great to see that Irving has this dynamic food culture that I didn't even know about.
Today, I have here all of the art pieces that I have worked on throughout the past two years in Sarajevo.
All the things that are put together here, I think it's going to be such an asset to this part of the city.
It's pretty awesome. I think it's really fun for the kids. There's a lot of goats and pigs, and so it's a great time for everybody, and lemurs.
We're basically a community full of diverse people. That's exactly what we're supposed to be as a community, which is people loving people.
Inside the Paffir, you'll see how the city generates its revenue and where that money is spent.
They are foundational for the city of Irving. Every business starts off as a small business.
DFW Airport and American Airlines announced they will double the number of gates in that terminal.
Tight quarters in here. That was back in 2023, when this area could only handle a five-to-10-year flood. But now, there's plenty of room for me, and me, and me.
Stretching over 5,000 square feet, this mural really honors Irving's history and celebrates its vibrant present.
This is going to be just a great project for the citizens of Irving. The children are going to love it. Modern aquatics is what we needed, and we've got it.
Stay up to date by subscribing to our YouTube channel at youtube.com/thecityofirving.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I'll just roll right into the next update.
Roll into the next one.
First of all, I want to start by saying a big thank you to the Communications Department website team. Angie Chabot, Elizabeth Knighton, Saul Garza, Alex Rango, and Samantha Hall. This team has behind this entire project. We launched both the extranet and the intranet. I'd also like to thank our departmental web content editors and our directors for supporting this effort. There's about 60 of these folks throughout the organization, and they have done the yeoman's work of making sure departmental pages look good, and will continue to work to refine and navigate as we move forward with our new website. We launched on June 2nd, so we are 10 days in. We have a brand-new baby here. And prior to that launch, we tested for two full weeks with neighborhood officers, Irving 360 ambassadors, our integrated marketing committee, and employees across this organization. An education campaign about the new website is currently underway. We've got banners out in front of City Hall. We've got posters at recreation and library facilities, where residents can scan QR codes and download our new mobile app. We're giving away swag. I got a notification about 20 minutes ago that we've given away swag to our employees to help educate them about their new intranet, or INET, as we like to call it. So we're working hard to make sure that we're distributing that information. We also have a postcard mailer dropping either tomorrow or Monday, so every resident in Irving will receive a postcard in the mail with the new URL and QR codes taking them to the mobile app. So it's a full-court press education campaign. We've also got new business cards that we're rolling out. They look like this. They do feature the new .gov URL. Mayor and Council, CSO, receive those Monday or Tuesday of this week. So if you haven't gone through that process, you can apply. If you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that process, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gone through that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't done that, you can apply. So if you haven't gotten your box of new business cards, they're available in the city secretary's office. As we move forward, we continue to work out the kinks with the new websites. We've received about 100 surveys so far on both the internal and external websites, and we've got mixed feedback so far, which is very helpful for us. We want to know where, where, where our gaps are, where are missing links, where are pages with content that you're looking for, you think content should be there and you're not seeing it. That input for us is very helpful so that we can continue to tweak and make those improvements on this website. We also recognize that the website is significantly different than our .org website. So there will be an adjustment period for both residents and internal users to figure out where things are and how it's designed. But they were designed with the end user in mind, so our residents, our businesses, our visitors, and of course, our internal stakeholders, our employees, and you all, our mayor and council. We do have a new customer relationship management platform and a mobile app that came with that, and those are both performing very well. Again, we're only 10 days in. We have about 70 downloads on both the App Store and the Google Play Store, and about 160 concerns have already been submitted through our Report a Concern app. ICTN put together an awesome video that we're going to be releasing, showing residents how to use that app, and we're going to show that to you right now.
Are you or someone you know interested in sharing your concerns? Well, good news! The city of Irving has just made it easier than ever for you to report those concerns, thanks to the new Irving TX Gov app. Just grab your phone and head to the App Store or Google Play, search Irving TX Gov, and download the app. Then create an account with your name, email, and password. From there, it's as simple as tapping "Report a Concern" and entering your non-emergency issue. Again, non-emergency issue. Select the type of concern and add any important details, like the location or relevant photos you've taken. If you'd like to be notified of the city's response, go into Account Details and set up Notification Preferences. And while you're on the app, be sure to check out the latest news and upcoming events right here in Irving. At home or on the go, the Irving TX Gov app keeps you in the know and engaged with your city. So download the app today.
It's our favorite ICTN salesman right there, Robert Cheek. Even with great planning and preparation, new website launches often experience issues, whether it's technical glitches, user experience problems, SEO and traffic drops, content errors, internal learning curves for our content managers internally. You know, we acknowledge that there are issues and we're working to identify those and fix them quickly. I have heard from a couple of our council members, and I really appreciate that input. Knowing what your constituents are saying and what they are, what their concerns are with the website is critically important for us to stay on top of. So please keep emailing me, email Chris, email Rachel, however you want to get that information to us. It's very helpful, and we absolutely want that. And with that, I thank you for your time.
All right. Everybody's got their phone out.
Download the app.
They're downloading the app.
Great.
All right. Sure, go ahead, Jack.
April, thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate your response, being one of the council members that emailed you with a concern from a resident. I appreciated your response, and I just wanted to ask as a, you know, for my own edification in the future, if there are content-related changes or improvements or things that we notice or someone else notices, do we go to you for that, or do we go to the department? Or who, who, who's the content touch point?
Yes, come to me, and we will distribute it to the appropriate department.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Great question. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anything else, Chris? We're going to take a couple of things out of order here. Next, we're going to ask that the Irving Los Cleaness Chamber comes forward with their mid-fiscal year update. Beth, I know you're here with your team, and you've got some of your board members. Would you be so kind as to introduce those individuals? And then maybe towards the end, we'll ask a couple to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Stouffer, Members of the City Council, City Manager Hillman. I'm Beth Bowman and have the privilege to serve as your president and CEO of the Irving Los Cleaness Chamber of Commerce and the Irving Economic Development Partnership. Joining me today is our Chairman of the Board, so my boss, Chairman Steve Love, who is also President/CEO of DFW Hospital Council, an association that's headquartered here in Irving. Many of y'all know our immediate past Chairman Brad Watson with Vistra Energy. We also have Michael Awesamusi, who's our Board Vice Chair of Governance. Vice Chair Heather Stroup, a small business owner here in Irving. She leads our Small Business Services Committee. Board Vice Chair Felicia Johnson with the Gatsin Group, another small business here in Irving, as well as Carrie Meany, who leads our Education Foundation for the Chamber. So as you can see, business industry is represented day in and day out. They're giving us feedback from small businesses in the Main Street Heritage District area to enterprise companies with their headquarters in our community, helping to run the global economy. So we hear a lot of feedback and really appreciate these individuals who have chosen to go above and beyond, volunteer in the community. But more importantly, Mayor and Council, as you know, they're always willing to amplify the Irving Los Cleaness story. And when we have customers and prospects that our teams work with, with City Manager Hillman, Assistant City Manager Sanders, you know, we're the team that's hired to amplify the Irving story. But ultimately, our prospects want to hear from the customers that are experiencing Irving today, along with their workforce. So these individuals and many others are willing to get on the phone and share, what is it like to do business in Irving? So greatly appreciate them, as well as their executives and their team, for being engaged in our Irving community.
Beth, just for understanding, how many people serve on your board?
So I've got over 56 bosses that I have the privilege to work with day in and day out, and have the privilege to lead a team of 15 individuals. A couple here today, Joe Chapa, he's our Vice President of International Affairs and Sister Cities. Diana Velazquez leads, she's our Vice President of Economic Development, and Sharon Hardaway is on our Economic Development Team. So these individuals choose day in and day out to advance our mission on behalf of our member investors. And then today, with our fee-for-services contracts with the city of Irving for Economic Development and International Affairs and Sister Cities, I have the privilege to report how we're performing against our contractual requirements for Q2 and Q1, so October 1 into March.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we begin?
Nope, go ahead.
I also wanted to say congratulations to Councilman Block and Councilman Mueller. We look forward to continuing to work with you on behalf of our business industry as we work to bring jobs home to Irving and continue to maintain and grow our capital investment. And Councilman Lemore, just, I don't, I don't see him here yet, but it's truly been a privilege and pleasure to work with him. Okay, so just as a reminder, this is our semi-annual report to council. So we worked with City Secretary Sinead Jennings to make sure that y'all received the packet. So in your council briefing packet was a pretty healthy briefing booklet. We know there's nine of you, and you and your constituents like to receive information differently. So we do our best through a very detailed memo to share with you what did we do the last six months, kind of what's the state of business industry in Irving? And then also, we know not everybody has the intention span to read a detailed memo, so we do some quick facts in our Q1 and Q2 report. Also, a copy of the presentation, which I'm about to go through, is in there, our KPIs, what they are, how we're performing against those KPIs for economic development, as well as international affairs and sister cities. And then I know everybody likes to see Irving in the headlines, so we have a very thorough report of Irving in the news related to business and industry, for you to just have a reminder of what our companies are doing within our community and continuing to secure us positive press. We also do a great job of amplifying the Irving Los Cleaness story, and in your packet there were two publications where we were able to take down an advertising opportunity, Invest Dallas/Fort Worth, we secured the back cover, so our advertising for our strength and numbers. And we work closely with Governor Abbott and his team on the economic development and tourism side. So in the Site Selection Magazine, I trust y'all are aware, Texas Governor Abbott won the 2024 Governor's Cup again. And within that magazine, we were able to secure an ad for our Build Here, Best Here. So just wanted to make sure, I trust each of y'all received your packets and information. If you didn't, we have extra copies and we're happy to get you those. As it relates to fiscal year 2024, 2025, we're expecting to meet and exceed our contractual key performance indicators while producing an exceptional return on the public's investment from an economic development perspective. So as shared earlier, Diana Velazquez leads our economic development efforts. And as we reflect back, looking from October 1 to March 30, our team was able to secure 15 recruitment wins in the first half of the fiscal year for a total of 2.3 million square feet of commercial space, about 1,200 new jobs created and came home to Irving, and over 519 million in capital investment poured into our community. Just to highlight, some of these wins were companies headquartered, Lissy Homes, a residential builder, Speedy Freight, an international logistics company, Communis Inc., a healthcare and benefits plan management company, and Southwest Airline Pilots Association, which is a bargaining unit for Southwest Airline pilots. On the retention side, Sharon works in this area on our team. We had four retention and expansion wins to our equipment and industrial, and industrial equipment supplier, Gartner, a research and advisory firm, Mitsubishi, UFG Bank, and Sirius XM Satellite Radio. These wins on the retention side created 40 new jobs, retained more than 1,000 jobs. These companies took down 170,000 square feet of commercial space and invested $5 million in capital investments right here at home in Irving, Texas. It's always a healthy sign when we're busy supporting so many new businesses with ribbon cuttings and visibility. Since October 1, we've helped 14 businesses, mostly in the food and beverage industry, and then one surgical center. Again, I'll just continue to amplify, these businesses greatly appreciate Mayor and council members when you're able to stop by and support their businesses, especially for their grand openings or grand reopenings. And City Manager Hillman and your team, I know y'all are all out and about in the community as well, specifically Assistant City Manager Sanders showing up and thanking these businesses for choosing to do business in Irving. So we look at the unemployment rate. The Texas Workforce Commission has released unemployment numbers. This is again dating back February to 2025. Irving had an unemployment rate of 3.9%, which is below 4% since March 2022. This rate is below the state of Texas unemployment rate for February, which was 4.3, and the national unemployment rate, which is 4.5. All three entities really saw unemployment increase over January's unemployment rate. Another area that we look at from a key indicator perspective is our submarket occupancy rates. We're seeing a little bit of softness in the Valley Ranch sector. We're down 1.86% in office space and 2.34% in retail in Valley Ranch in Q1. Freeport office occupancy and industrial flex continues to reflect the challenges in older properties that require infrastructure improvements and updating. I will just share, we've heard from business industry that is in that area. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for investing in capital improvements in the roadways out in this area. That has really helped us secure retaining some of our headquarters that are located in that area. So we greatly appreciate you. Our international affairs sister cities programs operating at its peak, consistently delivering top-notch results on a global scale. Eight trade missions, two international cultural events, including the always enjoyable 15th Annual Dragon Boat Festival and the DFW Italian Festival, which our international affairs and sister cities team lead that opportunity for our organization to be engaged with. Two international visits and three trade center events. The team also coordinated programs and activities involving Korea, Sweden, Poland, the Democratic Republic of the Congo, Czechoslovakia Republic, France, East Africa, Finland, and Japan. Major highlight with 2024 World Korean Business Convention in Hangzhou, where the team met with the government and business leaders and signed a memorandum of understanding with the Korea Innovation Foundation, which specializes in developing products and technology for high-tech bio, life science, agriculture, secondary batteries, and semiconductor markets. We've also renewed our 2012 MOU with the Incheon Chamber of Commerce and Industry. The team also supported the expansion of the 2021 MOU between the Tokyo Metropolitan Government and the State of Texas, and host of the Tokyo delegation right here at home in Irving Los Cleaness. On the marketing and advertising mission to amplify the Irving Los Cleaness story across using traditional marketing and advertising outlets, as well as social media platforms, as I shared earlier, we were able to place advertising in Site Selection Magazine's Governor's Cup issue, which featured the Governor Cup winner, Texas, of course, for the 13th straight year, which is really exciting to be a part of that. Then the magazine reaches a target audience of about 40,000 readers, both digitally and in print. Our digital media presence continues to grow. This year, we've had 245 new targeted followers for a total of over 25,000 targeted followers. We've had over 60,000 views on Facebook, LinkedIn, and X, and our digital marketing campaign recorded 1.5 million impressions. X has been experiencing a little bit of decline in its follower base recently, some attribute to loss, the challenge in the audience preferences, and evolving trends in the digital space. So we're doing our best to, again, amplify the Irving Los Cleaness story and capture those individuals that are making real estate decisions, and looking forward to those opportunities to benefit our community. Here's just a sample of the local, regional, and worldwide headlines Irving Los Cleaness has generated so far this fiscal year. And as I shared earlier, a full collection of those headlines are in your mid-year briefing packet. Small businesses, as you know, 8,500 small businesses are right here at home in Irving, Texas, and that number is growing. Our team invests a lot of attention on supporting our entrepreneurs and franchise businesses with programs like our Best in Irving Celebration. And as April showed earlier in the ICTN highlight, also our small business blitz. For the members on council and City Manager Hillman and your team that participate in going out and visiting our small businesses, thank you for your time. We hear a lot of positive feedback, and it's also a great way to hear, how can we help serve our small business community? This year, we've made 1,635 business contacts and visits. Our program, in our program, I'd like to point out, one area that we work together with business industry is through our Irving Economic Development Advisory Council. This group is comprised of our business volunteers and community leaders who financially, privately support and advise the partnership on economic development issues and opportunities. We've had a total of 117 participants within our last two meetings. This is an important group of Irving's business leadership and talent who are investing in the economic development efforts, including job creation and retaining and growing capital investment opportunities for our community. As you know, our outreach to site selectors, commercial real estate brokers, relocation consultants is critical to our success and in sharing the Irving Los Cleaness story. What they knew yesterday is no longer good today. What they know today is no longer good for tomorrow. So we need to make sure that what's happening in Irving Los Cleaness is So we need to make sure that what's happening in Irving Los Colinas is front and center and factual in the minds of those making real estate decisions. It's been a busy, productive year for our team. We've sponsored and participated in five Los Colinas dealmaker events, reaching 89 regional commercial real estate brokers and consultants. We've also participated in non-trade shows and missions in Texas, Utah, Florida, South Carolina, which facilitated meetings with 12 companies and 147 site consultants. These key events include the Life Science and Healthcare Innovation Summit and four Consultant Connect Summit meetings. To date, our teams made 52 retention visits to local businesses of every size and industry. Additionally, we're currently working on 28 economic development projects in our economic development pipeline. The dozen project losses that we've also documented are typically due to insufficient commercial real estate options that align with the prospect's requirements for their potential development in our community. We're seeing greater resurgence in the manufacturing space, which requires significant acreage in rail access, which if we don't have the minimum requirements, we don't respond to the RFIs. Just in conclusion, I'd just like to say thank you again, mayor, council, City Manager Hillman, for your engagement in economic development. It's truly been an exceptional period of growth, favorable business climate, favorable business policies, but the competition is fierce. And to the individuals that day in and day out show up to continue to make sure we're amplifying our business industry's needs, working through solutions and opportunities, it can be exhausting. But we're really committed to the mission. We believe in the community. We believe in jobs, job creation, capital investment opportunities, and we look forward to continuing to work with City Manager Hillman and his team and continuing to make sure in Irving, our businesses have a local address with global access. Mayor, that concludes our mid-year report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Hal?
Beth, I know we've gone through the last two or three months and a lot of discussion on issues of economic development and what that impact has been and what we're trying to get done in the future, which we basically have charged the chamber to really help us with that and some of the abilities that you reach out to companies. But one of the things that concerns me, as we are looking at our future development, not only at the ExxonMobil site, the along 161, but obviously the Putt Six site. Speak a little bit about the competition that you're running up against that's around us to really kind of focus that we need to be really clear on what we're dealing with, please.
So Councilman Zaponta, thank you for your question. We have a lot of great opportunities for development and redevelopment throughout our community. And the data that we have access to, our peers within the industry, our neighboring cities within the region throughout the U.S. have access to that data as well. When are leases rolling? Buildings that are up for sale? Land transactions? Chatter on landowners and what development opportunities they might be bringing? And so we want to do our best to make sure to maintain our competitive advantage. And in Irving Los Colinas, one of our critical competitive advantages is each of you choose to make sure government is moving at the speed of business. In Irving, we are rolling up the red tape to roll out the red carpet for business industry. City Manager Hillman, the permitting department, they make us look good day in, day out. Transportation, infrastructure, water, those teams from police and fire, everybody has to do their jobs so that we can cut that ribbon or turn that dirt and continue to make sure to take care of business industry in Irving. With saying that, Councilman Zaponta, other communities are starting to sharpen their pencils and chip away a little bit at our competitive advantage. You're seeing neighboring communities look at, you know, reforming their permitting department or looking at other ways where they can create a one-stop shop as well to, again, provide solution to business industry, real estate needs. So fiercely competitive within North Texas and obviously in other areas of the country as well, all looking to bring jobs to local communities and grow and maintain capital investments in local communities as well. Did that answer your question, sir? Okay.
Beth, you know, I'm going to ask a straight question. The dollars that are being spent by other cities and putting into their economic development, you know, it's 20, 30, 40, 50, 60 million dollars a year that we're competing against. It's not just the speed to market and the fact that you and I will spend time with them. It's a matter of dollars and cents. And to me, the one thing that I've been most thankful for is the relationship that we have between the chamber and the economic development team that Philip heads up and Chris oversees because we can try to work those things out. But it is more competitive today than it's ever been. You know, I have the privilege, a lot of times I'll be contacted by somebody that's looking for something and we'll start looking at how we can do it. And even before Beth or Chris are involved, the first thing they ask is, how many dollars can you bring to the table? And basically, I usually say zero. What we bring to the table is the fact that we can work with you, we are close to the airport, we've got good road service, and the only two tools we have is to give you some type of abatement on your, basically your sales tax or your property tax, because we don't have the penny that other cities have that they invest in their economic development. But yesterday, you and I had the privilege of being with the Wells Fargo team. They had many of their management in town, as well as 250 of their employees at the convention center. They were wanting to make sure that they were part of Irving and that their community of people that are moving in buy into this community and being part of it. So they had a team building effort where they did 3,500 backpacks that they put together for the, for the school. So, and then they had the opportunity for them to talk about the new building and the excitement. I probably talked to over 50 individuals who were so excited to be coming to here, even though they are closing, I forget how many offices around the metroplex and moving it all into this area with the intent of bringing together between 35 and 4,500 people into that facility right up front, and then to hire another 3,000 people in the near future for the hope of around 75 to 8,000 people in that building so that they can think about where else they could expand to maybe put even more people. But the bottom line is the excitement and stuff, they are talking about the Toyota Music Factory and what that brings. And we were talking, I was talking to one of the executives and they said that there potentially will be 500 people a week that fly into this facility. So that's 500 people that are going to be looking for hotel rooms and places to eat and things of that nature. So it's a whole different dynamic sometimes that comes into fruition here that we don't even realize. And I'm trying to remember when we started this project, about four and a half years ago?
Yes, sir.
And it just takes that long to get everybody on the same page and work with it. And a lot of good work by Chris and his team to be able to find the dollars. We're fortunate in that area to have the TIF, which makes it a little easier to be able to have some dollars to work with in that arena. But I think, you know, our biggest challenge, and I was at your board meeting last week where we talked about, that co-started the, and talked about, and you look at, you look at the reduction of office space or the amount of office space we have. We really have about 20 to 25%. And while that's similar to what others have, there are projections based upon, you know, Beth, you may want to get us a copy of that so that we can see, so the rest of the council can see what that looks like as far as the, the age of the buildings, the ones that were built in 70, 80, 90, and all the way up, which gives us an idea of what needs to be repaired or rejuvenated as we go forward with those areas. Because, because we have those older buildings, their projections a few years out is that we're going to be, we're going to have a lot more vacancy than other cities just because we don't have those buildings rebuilt. So I think as we talk about budgets and reinvestment and things, that's, some of those offices or some of the areas, we're going to have to really take a good, hard, hard look at and make sure that, Beth, if you have someone that's interested in something in that area, I, I look at Vistra Energy. That, to me, was a, was a huge, huge win for the city of Irving. That building had been sitting empty for a long time. It was, I think it was Perot that built it first, REDS, and then there was a bank in there for a while, and then it was empty for many, many years. But we were able to invest and build a parking garage, which gave it the ability then for them to be in a position where it could be redone. And Vistra Energy moved into it, and today we have a Fortune 500 company right there that's doing amazing business. I had the opportunity to be there a couple of weeks ago as well. So our business community is coming back to the office. The Wells Fargo, they expect everybody there. There is no work from outside. You will be working in the office five days a week. And so I think you're seeing more in that, more and more of that. We're seeing growth and expansion with Caterpillar. They continue to grow in our area. It's, the interest, I think, that's, to me, is these companies that are buying and selling the amount of square footage and companies that they're doing. Flowserve just acquired a major acquisition. Kimberly-Clark just sold a major acquisition, $3 billion worth of their thing. So it's a different world than it used to be. It used to be if a company had a home here in Irving, that was their home and they were going to stay here. But today, we saw Exxon leave, we saw Exxon buy Pioneer and it left. So it's just a whole different ballgame out there, and it's a, really a speed to market. The other thing is the, working with the governor's office, there's, there's certain requirements if you're going to be part of that team. Part of that is, is pay to play. And then there's also a commitment to travel with the team on a certain amount of, of over-the-seas ventures. So there's, there's dollars now that are spent to go places. For example, some of these trips for one person can cost up to $25,000 by the time you pay the airfare and the rooms and things of that nature. So I really encourage people to take the time to read these books and look at it, this, this small one that came in a couple of weeks ago, along with the magazines that talks about the, the public funding request that they've brought forward, really breaks it down into how much they spend on everything. We have a gentleman that's been fortunate to work with you for many years that, that figures out the, the economics of all this and the return on investment and does a great job. We'll hear from him at, once a year. We have cut back because a lot of the council that, we're blessed, we have these things that happen in our city every day, we just assume it happens every day. And so we get a book like this and it's like, okay, Beth's going to be here. And originally, our contract required her to do this quarterly, and we've asked to cut it back to twice a year because, not because we didn't want to hear it or not because it isn't important, but it's just, we don't want to spend any more of your time in front of us when you could be in front of the customer. And so I think it's important. But really, I do believe that there were a lot of things said in this last election that bothered me about the economic development company and team that we have in place and what we have. I can tell you that when I meet with mayors across the metroplex, there's only a couple of mayors that can say and show what we do and make it happen. There's not a lot of them that can talk about this company growing by 300, this company bringing 8,000, this company expanding in these areas. We have a lot of square footage, which is why we have a lot to fill up. But I really, I really would encourage people to understand. And I think if you heard who Beth introduced, you'll see that there's a lot of the people that she introduced are small businesses. The chamber is very active in the small business arena, and a couple of those small businesses are actually here and make their home in South Irving. So it's a very inclusive across the whole area. I probably will talk more about this because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding in what the chamber does and who's involved with it and what it really costs to do the business that we have to do to bring a team of site selectors in, for example, and make sure that they, that this works. The way it really works is when a company, a major company wants to come to Irving, Texas, they, they hire a site selector. They have a team that manages their real estate, but they almost always hire a site selector. So the, the goal is to be in a position where the site selectors want to be in Irving and they know our team here, they know our staff, they know our chamber, and then they'll make the recommendation for them to look at us. So a lot of times, if we don't have that opportunity to work with those site selectors, then we don't have the opportunity to be in the game. Because if they don't know what we have to offer and they don't have a relationship with our people, then we're, we're going to get bypassed. And I think that's why we're fortunate if we look at some of the opportunities that we have. I know there's one we're working on right now, Beth, that we haven't made public and can't make public yet, but, but we're competing with, with a couple of other places outside the country. It's not just, nobody else in the state of Texas is even being considered for this. And so that, that's the opportunity you get when you have the ear of the site selectors and you're able to make those decisions in contact with them. So I just want to really emphasize the importance of this, of this department and the, and the business that they do and the cooperation that they have with, with Philip and his team. They're the ones that, and how this really works, there's this perception that Beth goes out there and gives these people money and tells them what to do. The reality of it is, she can just explain what we have to offer, and then it comes into the internal team to talk about dollars and cents and abatements and things of that nature because that's in their arena. Beth is our first line of, of connection that she makes with her, her and her team. They then can make sure that the individuals really want to come, they get an idea of what they want, what they need, and then they sit down with our staff and they put it together. So the idea that Beth is out there offering money or offering positions or buildings or things of that nature is a little misleading because she doesn't have that ability to do that, that all the finances and the contracts. I've left K O. out of the middle of this, but almost everything that comes forward has to come through his office in some form of a contract before it comes to us in any time. So Beth, thank you. And I, I, again, I just want people to take the time to look through these and really understand. You'll see the return on investment is very good. Beth, you have a couple of your people here if they would like to say something. I know Chairman Watson, Light Past Chair, Chairman Love is here. I saw, you have about 10 people out there.
Well, I know Chairman Love is here if you, if you want to hear from business industry. I'll also just share, mayor, throughout that process in economic development, as we talk about how fiercely competitive it is, I want to thank each of you on council that are always willing to meet with our prospects. I know Councilman Canoso, you've taken time to meet with areas within your district that are looking for redevelopment. And the prospect is considering making significant capital investment and bringing jobs. And before they do that, they want to know that they can trust the community in which they're investing in. So we're going to continue to focus on amplifying the Economic Development Strategic Plan, which this council has provided direction on and our board has supported. We're going to continue to generate prospects as well as leads, and our goal is always to turn those prospects into economic development projects and those projects into wins that as a community, we can all celebrate. So thank you all so much for each of your time and your support for business industry in Irving. Chairman Love, I think mayor, I wanted to give you some time. Happy to, again, answer any other questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, City Manager Hillman. It's a real privilege to be here. And I also want to congratulate Councilman Block on your recent reelection and Councilman Mueller. Welcome. The chamber and the business community look forward to working with you. I know Councilman LaMortes isn't here, but we want to thank him for the public service and the service that he's given to the city of Irving. It's a great place to live, it's a great place to work, and it's good. It's a great place to live, it's a great place to work, and it's a good place to have friendships in Irving. You know, the one person that we didn't recognize because he came in during Beth's presentation, we do have Harry Lake with us. Harry is the chair-elect of the Chamber of Commerce. My term expires September 30th, and then Harry will take over as chair. So we're delighted that he's with us, too. You know, as chairperson of the Greater Irving Los Colinas Chamber, I really have the privilege of representing many of our investors and thousands of business people in Irving. And as Beth mentioned, we have many small businesses, and we recently had our Small Business Blitz. And I know all of you know this, but it bears repeating, two out of every three employees work for small businesses, and they help form the backbone in addition to our Fortune 1,000 companies that are here. You know, I am, in my day job, president, CEO of the Dallas-Fort Worth Hospital Council. We represent 90 hospitals, but we're headquartered right here in Irving. We're on Decker Drive. My wife and I have lived in Irving for a very long time. So I have a real vested interest in helping Irving continue to grow. And many people may not realize, but 90, but 70% of our tax base is business. So as we grow economically and as we bring in business and we help with the tax base, then we're going to help Irving continue to grow. The other thing that we're going to benefit, and we're already working on this at the hospital council, I know you all know that a year from now, we're going to have the World Cup in North Texas. Well, it's going to impact Irving. We already have in meetings where we bring in emergency managers, where we bring in people from the fire departments, et cetera, and we're meeting right now. It's going to be like nine Super Bowls, but 98% of the people aren't going to speak English. So the hospital's staffing up on interpreters. We're having to plan for hopefully not a mass casualty event, but we do have to plan for that in addition to the planning that you do for normal things like unfortunately heart attacks, strokes, et cetera, of people from foreign countries. You know, as we look at business and industry and we bring it into Irving, I think some of the challenges, in addition to what Beth said, is we have to look at the uncertainty in the global markets. And that's why it's so important that the members of the Chamber team that deal with international companies up on the very latest related to some of the global markets. You know, we have to work closely with the city related to future tax code changes, how that's going to impact business and industry. And most importantly, the workforce. We want to make sure that we have a healthy workforce and we have skilled and people that can support the businesses that choose to come to Irving. And all of that folds into economic development. And I think the Chamber does a really good job at leading companies and then working closely with the city and their team on convincing them that Irving's where they need to be. As Beth mentioned, we have a contractual relationship through our FIFA services contract, and we do this through economic development and our international sister city services. So we know how important this contract is. It is extraordinarily competitive, as we discussed a few minutes ago. But I think Beth and her team do an excellent job. Certainly support what the mayor said related to the relationship and the hard work that goes into economic development. And I think that we've had a successful first two quarters, but we want to do even better in the third and fourth quarter. So let's maintain this momentum team, and let's do everything we can to bring business and industry to Irving. Thank you for the time to let me speak to you, and I also want to say that the Chamber and all of us that are on the board of the Chamber, we stand ready to lend our support and help the city, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you, Chairman Love.
Any other questions?
Okay, Beth. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna put the legislate, push the legislative update to a little bit further because Brad wants to be here, so he'll probably come out at about 3:00. Same with the overview of Senate Bill 840, so we'll go to reviewing the regular agenda. Items number two is approving strategic planning meeting from Wednesday, May 14th. Item three and four are the minutes from the May 25th regular meeting, as well as a work session. Item number five is ordinance mending, ordinance number 2024-10996, providing budget adjustment number four to the fiscal year 24, 2024-2025 fiscal year budget. Item number six is approving release settlement with our, rolling in the estimated amount of $112,019.98 for settlement of a personal inju, injury claims. Item number seven is approving addendum to the agreement with CareLoop Inc. and the estimated amount of $70,800 to provide for caregiving advocacy services for a three-year period. Item number eight is resolution approving interlocal agreement between the city of Irving and the Dallas County Health and Human Services for emergency, emergency medical service data. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the preparation and filling the application for financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board for flooding infrastructure funding, the program for the West Irving Creek Channel Plan. We had an opportunity to hear about that this, this morning. Item number 10 is resolution approving the first amended and restated construction management at-risk contract between the city of Irving and Steel and Freeman Inc., establishing the initial guaranteed maximum price and substantial completion date for the construction of the Mustang Park Multi-Generational Community Center and Indoor Swimming Facility project.
Good afternoon, Mayor, committee members, council members. Trevor Crane, Director of Capital Improvement Programs. And today, we're talking about the Mustang Park Multi-Generational Center and our indoor aquatic facility. So just a quick overview of the proposed site plan. This is our third project in the Let's Play Irving Aquatic and Community Center Initiative. The project was to respond to citizen input and continue process of moving towards community center concept. We want to manage, update, and modernize our citywide multi-generational aquatics recreational This is our proposed floor plan of the facility. You can see our current square footage is just over 127,000 square feet, includes common areas, program spaces, office and support, athletics and fitness, a dedicated senior area, and indoor aquatics. These are just some renderings of what the facility will look like. That's the, the front of the building up there on the upper left. Along on the bottom right, that is our gaming pit where people can kind of overlook people playing the games, video games and that type of thing. You can see the walking track along the top. This is a part of our children's area where they can do arts and crafts. You can see some water features there. We, we are planning on showing Jaws at least once a week on the big screen for everyone This is a part of our dedicated senior center, so they will have their own entrance. There's a fitness area right there, a little coffee bar along with some billiard tables. So what we're talking about tonight is the amendment for the first GMP or Guaranteed Maximum Price. So just a quick project schedule. Tonight, we'll be looking to approve that first amended, amended and restated construction manager at-risk contract between the city of Irving and Steel and Freeman, establishing the initial guaranteed maximum price or GMP and a substantial completion date for construction of the Mustang Park Multi-Generational Center and Indoor Aquatic Facility. So this amendment will set the initial guaranteed maximum price of just over $80 million, and this is for the construction of the facility and establish, establishes a substantial completion date of May 12th, 2027. We plan on having groundbreaking ceremony either late June, early July of 2025, and then with a estimated opening in June of 2027. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions? I think we're ready to go. Item number 11 is a resolution awarding a contract, NEMA 3 Electric, Inc., in the amount of $286,676 for community development block grant funded Northwest Park Phase One lighting project. Item number 12 is approving addendum to number four of the engineering service agreement with Fries and Nichols in the amount of $115,020 for engineering design services for the rehabilitation and reconstruction of the carbon pump station. Talked about that this morning. Item 13 is approving addenda, amend, amended number three to the municipal maintenance agreement between the city of Irving and the Texas Department of Transportation for partial reimbursement for mowing and litter control along State Highway 114.
I got a question, Mayor.
Sure. Dennis?
So it says, this is partial funding, and I know that we don't always get completely refunded dollar for dollar, but have we had the conversation with Texas that was requested a couple of summits ago when the question was asked, why aren't we getting dollar for dollar?
Councilman, I will let Nathan address that question. He has, and we'll let you find the results.
Yes, sir. We, we have gone through and had conversations with them. We have got updated amounts that we are getting for, per acreage for mowing and for litter pickup. They're still only giving us three mowings and 12 litter pickups a year, which is what they go through and do in their areas. But we increased our litter per acre from $14.79 up to $24.20 an acre, and our mowing from $65 an acre to $78 an acre, which has gotten us a lot closer than before.
It almost matches what our contract cost is, but again, as Nathan said, that doesn't cover all of the mowings that we're doing. They're only going to pay for what they would have done.
Okay, all right. That's, that's what I want to know.
And I'm just going to, Nathan's not going to, Nathan, we sent Nathan up the middle on three, on Texas dot, and he, he beat him up, and I really do appreciate the good work, Nathan, that you've done. Thank you.
Al, did you have a? Okay, 14 through 21 are the bids. Any questions on the bids?
I've got a question.
Sure. Dennis?
Well, I guess 18. And I know we got the presentations, but the more I kept, the more I looked at this, okay, it's $192,000. And the administrative comment number two says the impact is this initiative will gather public input to help shape the future use of Main Street between Urban Boulevard and Second Street, enhancing the pedestrian experience along that section of Main Street. So are we saying we're going to have another session where we have the residents come down and tell us what they would like to see on Main Street?
It, that's part of the process. So there's a 30-day, the first part of the project is 30 days of community input and engagement, will be workshops and surveys. But they help to provide the input of what they want to see down there, which then goes into the design phase of what could be built out.
So my question is, because I've been to two of these already this year, that has to do with the input from the business owners and the one that was held at the senior center, where everybody took the big maps and drew out what they'd like to see downtown. At what point do we quit having meetings where people are saying, this is what we want, and start doing something? Because to me, we're fixing to spend some more money to repeat an exercise that we've been repeating. And I constantly say this, Main Street is 75 yards long. I mean, it's not like a whole lot of development is going to be done on that stretch. The other question I had was, I know they was going to build these mockups and everything. Are, are they going to build those? So, so are you saying they're going to shut down Main Street for three months when they, when they get to the point where they actually build these things?
So your first question, those are, were two other separate efforts. The one in regards to the senior center was out of the planning department in looking at neighborhood planning. So we recently, last council, or PND, I should say, they presented North Nursery, so they're going through that same exercise for the entire Heritage District, which is larger than the downtown area. The other meeting I think you might have been referring to were the downtown business meetings, which those are monthly meetings of us engaging our businesses and building that relationship and helping to try and encourage them come together as businesses and property owners to maybe one day build an association, but bringing them on together as partners. So those are separate but related efforts. The second question of what they're building out, the intention of this pilot is there were, it came out of a couple of different efforts. One was partly COVID of trying to enhance the pedestrian activity that's downtown. How do we make it more pedestrian friendly? We just redid, we're coming to an end of Irving Boulevard. What could we do for Main Street? There's many ideas that were thrown out there, all huge capital costs. So versus going down one road or avenue of what larger capital costs could be spent downtown, taking out the medians, taking out parking parklets or parklets, for example, this would allow us to have an opportunity to try out what could go there before investing millions of dollars into that block of Main Street. The items that could be built as part of the pilot are temporary in nature to, again, test out what people want to see there. The activation would primarily be the first weekend, would be the larger activation, and then within the contract, we have up to three months. So it wouldn't be shutting down Main Street for the entire three months. That's going to come out as part of the planning process. It could be a weekend, it could be a Friday, but again, that, it helps to have additional activation of the space to see what that space could turn into before going on to the next step of a larger capital improvement project.
And so we're talking about Main Street between Urban Boulevard and Second Street?
It would mainly be that block, but we're looking at how do we connect the clock tower down to Heritage Park? So bring individuals from all the way to the Dart, all the way to the Heritage Park, yes.
So what about the businesses, the D'Erizzani's and all of them, where you're building all these mockups out in front of their businesses? Where are the customers going to park?
That's a great question, though, is having them included as part of the pilot. That's what we would work with them on, is to how do we, if we were to close that section, we would plan where would those people park? That's part of doing the pilot to test that out. So when we first...
Yeah, but doesn't that work, excuse me for interrupting you, but doesn't that work against a business? Because the further away that somebody's got to try to find somewhere to park to get to a business restaurant, I'm not going to park around the corner to try to get to a business restaurant when I, I used to could park right in front of the business. To me, you're working against those business owners right there that are barely making it as it is by, by doing all of this on, on that short stretch of Main Street. I could say if you was talking about Urban Boulevard, maybe O'Connor to Nursery, but you're talking about 75 yards of street that's already has business on it. There's no vacant property on the street. So what are you really trying to accomplish, in my opinion, by doing this for $190,000? I don't, I don't, I don't get it.
So in regards to parking, there are several parking lots right adjacent to those businesses on Main Street. So there's the parking lot that we lease in the back. There's now new and improved parking on the street. So while there may no longer be the prime spots in front of that business, there is parking, parking adjacent to those businesses. This is an idea that has come out, has been tested in many other communities where they do close down a block to provide opportunities for various programming and other pedestrian enhancement activities and have actually had a positive impact to businesses. So by going through this pilot process, we can just test those theories again before going and deciding to put a parklet in front of D'Erizzani's or any of the other restaurants down there that might want to extend their dining experience into a patio space. down there that might want to extend their dining experience into a patio space. There's very limited right-of-way to have patio spaces out in the downtown area. So this, again, was an idea of would that be something that would work and be successful? Testing it out. The businesses on Main Street are a prime partner in this pilot process, so they would be involved, providing feedback. And again, this is testing a theory or an option before we go any further in investing in that.
And so the businesses already know they're gonna be part of this pilot?
We have been briefing them as part of our monthly meetings with them, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna vote for it, because I just don't, you know, nothing personal. Okay? I just don't see spending that kind of money, because it's not like you got vacant property on Main Street. Whatever you build, whatever future capital investment that you make is gonna be in somebody's building. You got the empty space, but you know, the little plaza space, but that's it. You have nothing else unless you're gonna tear down somebody's business and build something there. Again, I could see if you had, and I saw the examples that you was talking about, one in Colorado, I think it was, you know, but there was, there was empty lots. That wasn't already established businesses. So just so that, you know, anybody know, everybody know why I'm, I gotta be voting for, that's the reason why. I think we can take the hundred and ninety thousand dollars and do something else with it that would really be more beneficial to Main Street.
Al?
Yeah, I guess I, one of the few times I do agree with you, Dennis. Let me, let me just say, you know, I would feel much better if we would use that hundred and ninety-two thousand to make sure that we help all the restaurateurs, because that's what's there with a couple of other non-food enterprises, to really have a master plan that we help spruce them up, not just one or two at a time or whatever. So we're gonna do something that we think is gonna enhance, well, unless it's enhancing the business and it's a direct relationship. Now, I understand, and it looked good, and a nice presentation also, I'm not against the concept, but I'm really trying to connect it. How does it really help the business owners? And are we just hoping that they're gonna come, or are we gonna help them be part of the attraction, so?
So the business owners that we've spoken to are really excited about, it's, the Main Street activation is one part of it, but it's working with each business owner to get their buy on how it would affect their business. So like specifically, we've talked to Yoko So Good, who's right next to the Main Street Plaza, and the new Pilates studio. How can they utilize that Main Street Plaza area incorporation with their business? Additionally, to that Main Street activation, working with this partner also helps give ideas about how to incorporate new ideas to the facades or their businesses, or new programming that could match with Main Street. So yes, it is an activation for Main Street in that Plaza area itself, which is that vacant land that eventually we are hoping to take out, you know, for an RFP process further down the line, but trying to reimagine what we want that piece on Main Street Plaza to be before we actually, you know, sell it is a part of this as well. But there's definitely a collaborative piece, working with our businesses, not only activating the street, but what that activation ties into the businesses and how programming, things like farmers markets and other programming like Pilates classes on Main Street itself can help tie in a cohesive collaborative effort in this activation. Not so, not much so of just that activation on Main Street itself, but with the businesses included and one holistic approach.
Any other questions, comments? Mark?
Well, I'd like to look at it further. I mean, I like the idea of trying to be innovative and seeing what we can do to activate it and encourage more business, so I like it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on the bids? We'll go ahead then with our zoning case. We really have you working hard today.
It took me longer to walk up here. So yes, we just have one case, and it's actually not a zoning case, it's just a variance. So this is for QTS. They want to put a fence around the new substation. They can do a ten-foot fence by right, and they want a twelve-foot fence. And that's the request.
Any questions? We're fencing in a substation. All right.
Thank you.
Those are the kind I like. Okay, I had a couple of council members ask me about the mayor pro temp and deputy mayor pro temp, so you all can talk about that in an executive session when we get to that, and we'll go on to the next item, which is the North Lake Naterium Interlocal Agreement.
Mayor and councilwoman Joe walks up. The next few items are items that we had pushed from our May strategic budget review meeting, and we'll be walking through those, and had some important impacts on the budget. And we'll start off with North Lake and Joe, and maybe Joe, maybe start off with a quick update on the immediate challenge that you're having right now out there at North Lake.
Yes, sir. Right now, our team is out there working with a contractor, trying to find a leak that we have in a return line out at North Lake. We're having to go through the floor of the girls' locker room to find this leak and track it down and then make that repair. So they feel that they're relatively close to the leak, so hopefully we'll be able to get that and be able to get that facility back on track by early next week. All right, Mayor, Council Staff, Joe Moses, Parks and Rec Director, want to give you a brief update on the North Lake Naterium. Some brief info on the background of the facility. North Lake was built in nineteen eighty-four, is an eight-lane, fifty-meter swimming pool, thirty thousand square feet facility, six hundred and sixty thousand gallons, takes about thirty-three staff there, a number of full-time and part-time staff to operate that facility. So back in nineteen eighty-one, the Naterium project was approved by the City of Irving, the Irving Independent School District, and Dallas County College. The Naterium opened, as I mentioned, in nineteen eighty-four. At that time, we, that was the first of our interlocal agreement with the three entities for ten years with two ten-year options. So we renewed that option in ninety-four, and then again in two thousand and four. Back in two thousand and fifteen, we entered into an interlocal agreement for twenty years with a ten-year renewal with Dallas County College. At that time, the, the school district, no, I mean, I'm sorry, with the school district. At that time, Dallas County College no longer wanted to be involved with the operation of the Nateriums, so it was just the city and the school district. And we began also talks about doing some renovations out there. At the two thousand and seventeen, that's when we amended that agreement, and the school district decided to put a roof and do some other upgrades at the facility to the tune of about seven million dollars. And so it was a three-point million dollar, I mean, three-point-five million dollar split between the school district and the city, but the school district fully funded it, and what they would do is they would work off, we would allow them to use the facility up to half of the amount of the renovations that they put into it. So as I mentioned, in seventeen, school district, they funded those renovations. That included locker room updates, permanent roof structure on the building. It was a seven-million-dollar project, hundred percent funded by the TIF, the school district's TIF. So fifty percent of the facility of the three-point-five million dollars would, again, they would be able to utilize that facility up to that amount. The City of Irving agreed to fund a hundred percent of the operation of the Naterium, and again, until the debt of the ISD was satisfied, based on the percentage of the usage that the ISD used the facility. So for example, in two thousand and seventeen, the ISD was using twenty-six point four percent of the operational hours of the North Lake Naterium. At that time, it was a little over five hundred thousand dollars a year to run the facility, so twenty-eight percent, twenty-six percent of that was five hundred and four thousand dollars and one ninety, and so that was deducted from their debt. I mean, I'm sorry, that was the operating cost. One hundred and thirty-three thousand was twenty-six percent of that. So basically, we subtracted that amount from the three-point-five million, their half of the obligation for the renovations of the facility. And so that would go on each year until we satisfied that debt. So currently, right now, when you look at the cost share, so from seventeen to two thousand and four, two thousand and twenty, I mean, from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-four, we've applied a little over a million dollars. They've utilized the facility up to a little over a million dollars towards that debt. So the current balance that is obligated to them is a little over two-point-four million dollars. Each year, our annual operating costs go up, so currently, the operating cost is right around a little over nine hundred thousand dollars, and we're estimating by the time we get to two thousand and thirty, it'd be over a million dollars to operate that facility at the rate that we're operating it now. Also with the school district, their usage factor has increased up to thirty-eight percent, so we did reach out to them, and we are going to change that, so that will also have an impact and speed up the time that we satisfy that debt. But for the contents of this presentation, we're just gonna use the original debt that's in place, the original percentage in place. So we're estimating at, even at the original percentage, if we go, we're looking at two thousand and thirty, that will be, at that current percent, they'll be about ninety-five percent satisfied for where they are with, on the debt. Here's the operational hours in North Lake. You can see on our hours, our swim operational hours, we use the facility a little over sixteen hundred hours annually, and in the school district on the right-hand side here, uses it in the morning for their swim lessons, I mean, for their swim teams, and in the afternoon for PE classes for Singly Academy. So they're a little over a thousand hours annually that they use the facility. So when we look at program and attendance, overall, North Lake gets for open swim, little over eleven thousand visitors. That generates about eighteen thousand annual revenue. When you break it down, that's about six point five visitors per hour. Our big programs that bring in the most revenue for us are our water aerobics and our swim lessons. For water aerobics, we have a little over four thousand participants, sixteen hundred dollars in revenue, but our swim lessons are the ones where we really bring in the money. We bring in over four thousand participants and over two hundred thousand dollars a year in annual revenue for swim lessons. And then we also do lane rentals and other special events and other classes that also bring in about an additional ten thousand in revenue. All those are taught by our staff. So here's the current condition of North Lake Naterium. This is downstairs in the pump room, going down to where the filters are. This is the non-functioning bulkhead. Usually, this would slide and give us the opportunity to divide the lane up to where we can use the full fifty meters currently, and has been stuck in the middle, so basically we have two twenty-five meter pools. Again, photos of some of the piping underground at North Lake. Down in the pump room, some of the drain areas. So future considerations, with the new facilities coming online, there will be a replication of services. Also, the project, the increased cost of operating North Lake, as we indicated, each year, we're projecting about a five percent increase. It's just gonna get more and more expensive to operate that facility. There's gonna be continual maintenance cost. As we know with our seasonal pools, the older these facilities get, the more expensive it is to operate them as we continue to move forward. Lack of need of a fifty-meter swim pool. We haven't operated with a fifty-meter swim pool in a number of years because of the bulkhead being broke in the middle. That is more so of a competitive nature. That's not so much of what we do. And as I mentioned, because we are now stuck in the middle with two twenty-five meter pools, what we're bringing online with Center Park and Mustang are going to be two twenty-five meter swim pools. So we will have two twenty-five swim pools in our facility. Aging infrastructure, the filtration system at some point is going to need to be replaced. The pool shell is going to need to be plastered and eventually replaced, the non-functioning bulkhead, just general aesthetics of the facility. So as we talk about the Mustang impact, once we build the Mustang facility, looking at the demographics of the users that we get at North Lake, majority of those folks, based on their zip code, come from the Mustang area. So we feel it only makes sense that we transfer those lifeguards and those programs to the Mustang facility, because those folks are gonna go there anyway, because it's gonna be closer to them. So we would move those existing swim programs and events to Mustang. We would also relocate some of our public and open swim hours to Mustang and Center, and also provide, so basically, at that point, we would only mainly be providing the facility operation for the school district until we satisfy the debt. So want to talk a little bit about terms of getting out of the agreement, termination criteria. One is a mutual agreement between both parties to end the agreement. Another, the second option is that if any of the parties fail to perform their agreed-upon obligations set forth in the agreement. The third option is a two-year written notice from one of the parties to the others that they are unable to perform their prospective obligation, and then also an agreement to basically make the school district hold for the remaining balance of the three-point-five million-dollar debt for their half of the renovations. So whatever portion that they hadn't already used, basically to make them hold for that. And again, just talking over these options again, so moving forward, our options are, do we continue to operate North Lake until that the school district is, that debt is satisfied with them? And as we, I'll show you some of the estimates that we have here that pushes us into two thousand and thirty-two, two thousand and thirty-four, somewhere in there. Two, immediately provide them with a two-year notice that we wish to exit the agreement, pay to remain in balance, and then exit the facility in two thousand and twenty-seven upon the completion of Mustang. The third option is to give them a two-year notice that we plan to exit in twenty-six, give them the notice in twenty-six, and then exit in two thousand and twenty-eight. The benefit of that, that gives us a year of Mustang operation to really see how it impacts the North Lake operation. It also gives us another year of operation to close the amount of money, to reduce the amount of money that is owed to them or the usage time owed to them, and makes it closer to the operational hours, the operational budget that we have for this facility. So when I, I have some examples here, I'll show you guys. So option number one, that shows us if we just play it right out, based on the twenty-six point four percent usage, that would be, the buyout would be in two thousand and thirty-four. We would satisfy that debt. Option number two shows that if we give them notice here in October of two thousand and twenty-five, at that point, we have paid almost two million dollars. The buyout amount would be one point, little over one-point-five million dollars. We're estimating the annual operating budget, because of some of the reduced staffing on there, would still be around seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That would, we estimate a remaining balance of a little over seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. If we do option three, which we wait to give them notice in twenty-six, that gives us another year of usage for them, which reduces the buyout amount, that would take, at that point, they would have used up to a little over two-point-one million dollars of time at that facility, with a remaining buyout amount of about one-point-three million. We estimate the operating cost at that time would be eight hundred, little over eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So the additional funding needed to buy out of the contract would be a little over five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So at this point, I'd like to open it up for discussions.
Mark? If more things continue to fail at the pool, who's responsible for those repairs?
We make those repairs, and then, and just like with the, based on the agreement, a percentage of those repairs goes towards their debt. I mean, their, their time to pay out for the usage of the facility.
One-to-ones, whatever we pay in for repairs goes to reduce the debt?
Well, fifty percent. Fifty percent of it goes towards, they'll, goes towards their obligated debt, yes.
Okay. Well, yeah, I favor option number two.
Thank you, Mayor. Who gets, what happens to the building at the term- Who gets, what happens to the building at the termination?
The building is owned by the, the college district, so it would be their facility. And so they could, they could repurpose it or, or they can go into an agreement with the school district and can continue to function as an auditorium.
Okay, thank you.
Chris. You want to push your button, I can tell.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate the, the presentation, Joe. Just, I believe, Joe, you've had conversations with the school district.
Yes, sir.
To give them the heads up. I had lunch with Dr. Smith, the new president out there, about two weeks ago, just to introduce ourselves and get to know each other. And I did bring this discussion up with them to let him know that we're looking into this, and that will be closely aligned and connected and communicative with them as we look at this. But I did let them know that with the construction of Mustang and our moving forward, pretty much of all of our programs out of the auditorium up to Mustang would be occurring in twenty twenty-seven. So he understood that. So I just wanted to make sure, use the council to know that we've been in good connection with the school district and with the college district as well.
Yeah, Chris, I mean, every time I go out there, there's something that's not working or it's, you look at the, up at the ceiling and you wonder if it's coming down on you and, you know, and now we're tearing up the bathrooms and it's just, it's a never, I mean, it's forty-seven years old. I mean, we, we had a, you know, we took out our, our pools that were a lot older than that, but they didn't have covers on them and stuff. But, and all the piping buried underneath all the sidewalks and, or I mean, under all the foundations and stuff. And it's that old steel stuff. I think that the sooner we can get out of this deal, the better off we're going to be. Al.
Yeah. Chris, am I understanding that we're really shifting for the next two years to twenty twenty-seven? That we're going to basically, now that Mustang will be coming on in twenty twenty-seven, what we've also done at Lee Park, that we're looking, that's sufficing for the city utilization for our young people?
Yeah, according to Joe, with the addition of Mustang, we will no longer need the natatorium to provide our services.
But the timing, they know that?
Yes.
Okay. I think at, at this point, I think that's a good strategy. I think we're putting the money into our facilities and make sure that we're fully utilizing them, so. Good.
And I think, Joe, you and I have talked a little bit about this, and I definitely appreciate Joe's thoughts on, do we give it a year to see how it plays with Mustang, what hits in and out? And Joe, I definitely understand that. I do echo some of the council's concerns is, this place is struggling from a physical perspective, and I'm concerned that more and more things could go wrong. Joe, I also appreciate that the conservative approach in applying the twenty-three percent, I think that is going to increase even this current fiscal year, next fiscal year, it will increase. So that, that debt load will be reduced a little bit more quickly. In the end, we're still going to owe some dollars. I believe that we'll be able to find those dollars to be able to pay whatever remaining debt service that we have over to the school district off. I'm just concerned that we could just find more and more and more things with the current example of what we're experiencing now. We can't, unfortunately, at this point, I know your teams will eventually find it. You guys have great teams. Where is this leak in these forty to forty-five-year-old cast iron pipes? I'm just concerned that if we start investing a lot of what would eventually be just total sunk cost into a facility that we know we're going to be getting out of here in the next two, three years, I think the more that we can minimize that potential exposure is probably the best route. And Joe, I hear you and understand that maybe you need to transition. I'm just, I am, I'm hesitant on that one, only because just of what we're seeing now. That place is falling into some, just old impacts. It's just old infrastructure. And it's just, once you get forty to fifty-year-old infrastructure, it just needs to be replaced, and we will continue to have issues with that.
Well, steel pipes, just like our steel pipe we have in the ground for our water and stuff, you fix a piece and then two weeks later, a month later, you come back and fix a piece next to it. It just goes on and on and on until you. And the other thing, we will have the Center Park up and running with an indoor facility that we can also be using for, you know, our swim classes and things like that until the other ones are completed. So we will have another indoor facility that we can use year-round that'll be available even sooner than this.
Yes, sir. Center Park is scheduled to be open next year.
Yep. So council, of those three options, the consensus direction from council would be for us to focus in on, I'm seeing two or three options, I'm seeing two.
Two. Sure. Here we go. So option two means we give them notice this year in October, and we will be out of the facility in twenty twenty-seven.
We would make sure, I'd want to make sure we give a little bit of buffer in case there's some construction issues and things like that. So I'd want to be strategic with that.
Yeah. Right here, I mean, we're just saying, we estimated if we gave a notice in October, that, that would give us to September of twenty twenty-seven, or October one of twenty twenty-seven, a year.
Fiscal year.
Two years from the date we gave notice.
Okay. We got a number two.
Okay, yes, sir.
Proposed improvements to Thomas Jefferson Park.
All right. TJ. Oh, hey. You want to do it?
Absolutely.
You just got eighty million dollars. Yeah. I thought it was mine, but I'll do it for you. All right, so this is the Thomas Jefferson Park update. So just quickly, Thomas, Thomas Jefferson Park, eighteen point five acres. It includes one point two five miles of walking trail, also playground, pavilion, and a half basketball court. This was a part of the twenty nineteen Parks Master Plan, and the park assessment recommends addressing trail ADA issues. So trail slope and pedestrian bridge are not accessible currently. Water currently drains over the trail, and the embankment has experienced slope failure. Just a couple pictures of kind of what's going on out there. You can see on the right, the embankment's, you know, fallen over the sidewalk there. Lots of issues with the sidewalk, gaps, ADA issues. So park improvements and possible funding strategy. Federal community project funding is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The park amenities to include exercise stations, volleyball courts, and pickleball courts. There's a possibility of TIF funding, so potential source for remaining project budget. This would require an amendment to the TIF plan. The TIF removal of twelve hundred linear feet of trail to address accessibility issues, replacement of remaining trail, improved bridge connections, and additional park amenities. So after requesting a list of projects for federal funding consideration, Congressman Mark Vizi submitted an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar funding request to the House Appropriations Committee for Jefferson Park in twenty twenty-three. Funding request was approved and will be used to construct exercise stations, volleyball courts, and pickleball courts, subject to final review of the grant agreement. The city has until September fifteenth of twenty thirty-two to spend the grant funds, but plans to proceed with the project once project, once remaining project funding is Just a quick overview of the estimated cost of everything that would be planned out there. You can see at the top where we would use the grant funds, and then at the bottom where we would potentially use TIF funds.
We don't have that page.
Oh, it's not in there.
I apologize, we'll get you written copies of that.
Do any of you have it?
This one.
Do you want to just hold on that one just for a second?
Yeah, everybody.
Make sure everybody has an opportunity, we'll get that physical copy over to you.
So the top three is what we can do with the grant?
We could do a lot of different things with the grant. Some of the initial ideas were, do we just use the grant money to tear out the sidewalk? We had some hesitancy with that, to use federal money to just tear something out, not put something back. Usually, you want with federal money, be able to show, here's what we were able to do with those federal dollars. So we thought it was important to actually put the federal dollars towards the amenity portion of that, just so we can show, this is what our federal earmark was able to provide as a benefit for the residents.
Mark.
I've actually spent a fair amount of time at that park, and it's, it's, it's very, it's used very much by the residents around there, and it is in poor repair. So I'm glad to see the, this project. I do wonder about pickleball, because it's of the noise, it is very close to a lot of apartments. You hear stories about people complaining about pickleball noise, whether that is actually the, the right amenity for the, for the park or not. But as far as I get, the sidewalks are, you know, they're some sort of, they're forty-five degree angles in some parts, and to see that approved is very important.
Trevor, and I should have asked you this before, and I apologize, have we engaged any residents or any community meetings relative, or Joe, relative to some of those amenities per Mark's comments on pickleball? And if not, I think that'd be a, a good approach, so we can make sure we're getting the amenities in there.
No, sir. That, matter of fact, let me go back, go here on the presentation. That would have been our next steps, is, is public engagement. Right now, these are just internal things. We were just looking at amenities that are out there. But once we secure funding, the thing, we would go out, we would update our park board and do some community engagement.
And so those amenities might change based upon that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I've actually going to be there, not this Sunday, but next Sunday for the International Day of Yoga. And so there'll be probably two hundred and fifty or three hundred people there on that day. And so I didn't know if we had something ready to show them or if anything that would be an opportunity to get insight into that neighborhood. I agree with Mark, I don't think pickleball is that neighborhood's game. I think there's, you know, they like, I believe the original plan had some, did it have restrooms?
Yeah, there's portlets and a, and a portlet shade on the, on the playground area side, so we can look into that. I don't know what all entails to put permanent restrooms out there, or it would be an upgrade to the similar structures that are out there now.
And I didn't necessarily mean that's what we were doing. I hadn't really seen what all you had on that list of stuff. That's what I was just asking, because what you have is you have a large community there that the guys meet every day, they're out there on the, they sit around the picnic tables and you've got a, and they visit every day. That's a lot of retired people, their wives kick them out, and they go out there and they, and they, and they all sit together and talk, and, and I'd walk, and one of the concerns that, that they've raised with me, a couple of them, was, one, the sidewalks, the other was the water along that gets stagnant and green, if there's some way to move that around. And then the other one was, since they get kicked out of the house when they have to go to the restroom, they got to go all the way back to the house. But, and I'm not saying that we should build restrooms or not, I just was curious what all you had in the, in the, so, yeah, I see restroom up there, that's why I was.
Yeah, these are just, based on some of the improvements that we made at other parks, we were just kind of putting together some ideas. But the essential thing would be to go out to the community and have some public engagement to really see what the residents out there want, because that's who we're going to build this for, so.
Yeah, I think that you'd get a great, if you, if they knew you were going to be doing some work out there, you'd probably get two or three hundred of them pretty fast to come over and tell you what they would like to have. Sorry, Mark? Or Al, were you?
Yeah. I, I forgot to make that point about the restrooms. It's a neighborhood park, and so I don't like the idea of the restrooms. It provides a reason for people to be there that should not be there. And so, and I know there's restrooms there now, and, and I know that it draws homeless people there to the park. And so it's, it's not a destination park, so I don't see any reason to have the restrooms there, they should be taken out.
Al.
Yeah, let me, Joe, my sense is, know a little bit of that park, that are we trying to stuff in, whether it's pickleball or some kind of another recreational piece, other than just let it be what it is, a nice place to walk and, you know, congregate, and there's a couple of nice statues? And it's done. I mean, I don't think we always have to put something on the green spaces.
Yes, sir. No, we were just looking at, as I mentioned, some of the upgrades we've made at some of our other parks. But again, the key to this is, is community engagement. You know, we hadn't had a chance to engage the community because we hadn't secured funding yet, so we didn't want to get people all about, all excited about a project that we don't have funded. But once funding is secured and we go out there and we engage with the community, then we'll know exactly what their desires are, and then we'll work with C I P and come up with a design that, that matches their needs.
Okay. Good, thank you. Great. Yeah, I think the neighborhood will be really excited about if we can get some, get some funding. There's a lot of opportunities there. And it's kind of a passive park in that way. Like you say, it's where they, that these guys go and, and they have events there every once in a while and walk this. They do two walks a year that I go over there and do to raise funds for the Gandhi company or foundation and different things. So they're, they're pretty active. So I think just even those first five or six underneath the, widen the sidewalks and the side rock removal and slope repair and flex space and concrete and, those things are, would be a huge, huge, and site furniture, I think, would, would play well. I know restrooms aren't Chris's thing either, so I'm not pushing, pushing for them. I just wanted to see what there was or what there wasn't, so. Chris, I want not to speak for you.
No, you're fine, and I concur. And I think restrooms do, they actually provide many times a challenge, especially on a smaller park like this. The good news here is this park is already inside the TIF. And so the process would be, we would identify through the community and put meetings, what amenities are there. We'll want to keep it reasonable, because they could potentially come up with a lot of great ideas that would significantly increase the cost, just basically on a, on a six million dollar-ish, that's not a, I'm getting the evil eye by Brett right now, I can already feel it. But if we keep it in the six million dollar range, we do have the TIF dollars over there to be able to work with, especially in combination with the federal funding that we were able to secure. So if we keep in that range, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Well, I understand why we're looking at pickleball courts and stuff, because that's what we hear every place we go, is we need more pickleball courts and stuff. I just think, though, to Al's point, this neighborhood park may be one that we, that we don't use them, but Mark, you'd have a better, it's in your area and stuff. I think once we get a feel of the neighborhood, we'll be able to see what they really want. But I think nice trails and benches, some open spaces probably, will, will make them happy. So we may not have to spend a full six million to take care of everything.
The number one request that, that we've had over the years has been lights in the trail.
Oh, that's right. I should have, that should have been my first thing. You're absolutely right.
Lights in the trail have been the number one request that we've heard over the years from the residents out there. So I'm sure that's, those are, those are high priorities.
Yep, you're right. I apologize, that should have been one of the first things I said, because that's been one of the things they've been concerned about. Did we put some solar lights out there? We tried some, someplace, anyway.
I think there was, there's emergency lights over by the basketball court, so, but to light the whole trail, we have that in there. But that, that has been a consistent request from those residents, to be able to put lighting out there and widen that trail would be a huge.
Yeah. So I think you're hitting the right spots. If you can get the trail in, you can get some nice furniture seating areas for them and then, and light the trail, that's some turf and vegetation, I think they'd be really excited. But we'll find out.
Yes, sir.
Chris says he's got, he's got an idea where the money is, so that's, that's the first hurdle. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Proposed change to the radio network infrastructure and staffing. You guys want to take a five-minute break here, it's three o'clock, and then we'll come back and maybe Brad will be back, and if he's back, then we can go on to the other thing before we talk about the radio thing. So we'll take about a ten-minute break.
When it comes to celebrating America's two-hundred-and-forty-ninth birthday, there's no such thing as too much fun. That's why Irving Sparks and Stripes is a two-day event. The red, white, and blue extravaganza starts on Thursday, July third, at Levy Event Plaza. Be sure to arrive early for a patriotic flyover at seven o'clock, followed by live music, fireworks, drones, and a whole lot more. The Star Spangled Celebration continues on Friday, July fourth, in the Heritage District, with the annual Independence Day Parade at nine A M., followed by a pie-eating contest and plenty of family-friendly activities. Don't forget, this is a two-day event, so make plans now to attend Irving's Don't forget, this is a two-day event, so make plans now to attend Irving Sparks and Stripes.
Sliding into summer.
I'm really a fan.
Pretty fun. I, I can feel like I'm screaming a little bit.
Lee Aquatic Park is now open, and we hear from some of the first people to get inside, and even the mayor gets in on the fun. Drainage progress.
All this effort, all finished and complete.
See the improvements that are reducing flooding concerns for many homeowners. Plus, a week-long salute to small business, a preview of Sparks and Stripes, and how some are already preparing for the next school year. Now on City Source.
Honoring the fallen at the Memorial Day Ceremony hosted by the Veterans Memorial Park Committee. Hello and welcome to City Source. I'm Thomas Gandy. We'll have coverage of that event later, but we begin with the debut of the highly-anticipated Lee Aquatic Park. We covered all of the grand opening activities.
Big smiles and huge splashes at the grand opening of Irving's new Lee Aquatic Park.
I'm really a fan. We approve. Oh, it's amazing. We've been waiting for it for a while, because we actually live in the neighborhood, so even the kids are like, yay, something gonna open!
I think it's really fun. It's great for the families.
The first thing most people notice is the tall orange water slide. Check out the view going down. It kept people coming back over and over.
Like maybe six times?
We're gonna do it again. We liked it.
I definitely go on it again.
We were Lee Park rats back in the day, so we would always be here swimming with them.
Gilbert Gonzalez brought out a lot of family members for opening day of the new pool.
It just kind of brings back a lot of memories. It's great now that I have my family and my kids. Now it's their turn.
There is so much to enjoy, including a kids' area, a basketball goal, and plenty of shade.
And I'm definitely going to be a member here.
Are you gonna tick? Three, two, one.
Leaders cut the ribbon to celebrate the opening.
And what you see behind here is exactly what you, as the residents, asked for. So this really is your aquatics facility.
It was hard for me to imagine what it would actually look like, but this is, this is really impressive.
Children are gonna love it. Modern aquatics is what we needed.
I look forward to jumping in.
Hours later, he did. Irving Mayor Rick Stover took the ceremonial first slide.
You start picking up speed at the first curve. You kind of see how it goes.
One of the perks of being mayor.
One of the perks of being mayor is I get first shot.
At all of these opening events, people are already looking ahead as Irving elevates aquatics and recreation.
It's actually hard to imagine that it's going to get more exciting with each phase, because this is a big day.
The Center Park Aquatic and Recreation Center is under construction. It will house an indoor pool full of features.
It's a four-season facility that is going to be connected and adjacent to our current existing center of recreation.
And soon, leaders will break ground on the largest of all, the Mustang, a multi-generational aquatic and recreation facility.
There's a senior facility. There's also going to be workout facilities. You'll have an indoor track to run around.
It's going to be an amazing, an amazing facility.
But on this day, the focus is on Lee Aquatic Park, and all of the summer fun families will have here for decades to come.
It's great to finally be able to come here, relax, and enjoy the amenities that the city of Irving provides.
Lee Aquatic Park is located at 3000 Pamela Drive. It is open Tuesday through Friday from 2 until 8 p.m. On weekends, the hours are 1 to 7. Along with Lee, find fun and cool off at the Cimarron Family Aquatic Center, the Heritage Aquatic Center, the North Lake Nightatorium, the West Irving Aquatic Center, and Spray Parks. Find locations and admission fees at irvingtx.gov/aquatics. You will want to make note of that new website, and we'll have more on that in a second. Find more summer fun here. It's the Animal Connection Experience at Fritz Park. Through the end of July, it is open Thursdays through Saturdays from 10 a.m. until 5 p.m., and on Sundays, the hours are 12 to 5. Along with opportunities for kids to pet animals and ride ponies, there are surprise activities on Saturdays, and a new snow barn. Admission to the Animal Connection Experience is $4 for Irving residents. Fritz Park is located at 312 East Gilbig Street. Irving's new website is now live. It is irvingtx.gov, and it is designed to be your source for everything Irving. This is a look at the new homepage. You will notice the vibrant colors and updated design. Right in the middle is a good place to start. It's called Choose Your Adventure, and it will connect you with popular attractions and activities. There is also a service finder, a new way to report concerns to the city, and more eye-catching links to ICTN videos in the news section. Again, the new website is irvingtx.gov. A massive underground upgrade is helping to protect hundreds of Irving homes and businesses. Robert Sheek takes a look at the Rochelle Bridge reconstruction and the big reason behind it.
Traffic once again whizzes past the Rochelle Road Bridge. But the importance of the year-long reconstruction of this bridge isn't at street level, it's down below. On some spring days, it can feel like a peaceful birdbath. But on others like this one, you can see how essential it was to upgrade the original channel that was built back in 1962.
There's quite a bit of difference with the standards back then to the standards that we have today.
It's tight quarters in here. As you can tell, this is maybe five feet tall. That was back in 2023, when this area could only handle a five-to-10-year flood. But now, there's plenty of room for me, and me, and me, and me, and me, and me. But more importantly, this area is now equipped to handle a 100-year flood.
All this water is going to be coming through, and we needed a place for it to go.
This tunnel that feeds into the Embassy Channel actually runs a few blocks under Rochelle Road from MacArthur Boulevard. So this project was done in conjunction with the reconstruction of MacArthur, and will improve drainage along that major thoroughfare as well.
This was the driving force of this whole project, or at least the timing of the project. When we redid MacArthur, we wanted to touch MacArthur once and address all the utilities, so we would not have to be doing this major project again.
Not only is the new channel significantly wider, deeper, and easier on the eye...
Looks so much better than just a flat concrete.
It also reduces the flood risk for hundreds of homes and businesses in this neighborhood.
It feels good walking down here. All this effort, all finished and complete, and you actually, it's tangible, and you can see it.
And on rainy days like this, you can definitely see the difference. Robert Sheek for City Source.
Planning for Irving's next fiscal year is underway. City leaders and the budget team are looking for suggestions, feedback, and opinions on what should be considered in the next budget. Residents have a chance to weigh in during a couple of public input sessions. They will be on Thursday, June 12, and Thursday, June 26, at 7 p.m. at Irving City Hall. Adoption of the budget is scheduled for September, then the new fiscal year begins on October 1. Learn more about the current budget at irvingtx.gov/budget. The Irving Veterans Memorial Park Committee hosted the annual Memorial Day Ceremony to honor and remember the fallen. That is the somber playing of taps as people turned out for a wreath laying ceremony at the park. Prior to that, attendees heard from speakers inside the Jack D. Huffman Community Building.
I have never served in the capacity, unfortunately, but my parents, my dad, who served in the Army, fortunately did not see any combat, always instilled in us the importance of remembering and reflecting, and appreciating the great gifts of freedom that we all enjoy because of the sacrifice of many, many individuals. That we can sit here and remember them, not only today, but all throughout the year, as we enjoy all the great blessings that we have in our lives, that we receive from the country and the freedoms.
The Silvertones provided patriotic music at the event. The Irving Veterans Memorial Park Committee hosts a similar event each year for Veterans Irving is known for big business, and is sometimes referred to as the headquarters of headquarters, but most businesses in Irving are actually small businesses. Each year, the Chamber of Commerce sets out to make sure they get appreciation during the Small Business Blitz. Check it out.
It's just a fun day, really a fun week.
Volunteers set out to visit 1,000 small businesses in Irving, delivering resource bags and a message.
Just to thank them for supporting Irving, small businesses really do make up a lot of Irving.
Saying we appreciate you, saying we're here to support you.
What we're doing today to show our appreciation means a lot.
Before they started, some motivation during this kickoff here at the Macia Hernandez Institute.
You have to agree with me that the small businesses that we have in our city of Irving are the best.
They are foundational for the city of Irving. Every business starts off as a small business.
This is all part of the 7th Annual Small Business Blitz, an initiative of the Irving Musculinas Chamber of Commerce.
Well, small business is kind of the backbone of everything. We have all these entrepreneurs that come out, and they try to start their businesses, and so many of them are successful because of the work that they put into it.
New this year, what's described as a reverse career fair.
We have partnered with Irving ISD to really promote their CTE program. We have students that are ready to enter the workforce right out of high school. They're motivated, and they have amazing skills that they're learning right now in high school.
The Small Business Blitz wraps up with a celebration here at the Rayleigh Underground that includes a resource fair where small business owners can learn more about what's available to them to help.
We want our small businesses to know that there are enterprise companies that are wanting to do business with them. We also want them to know the partners and the entities within the community, from the Small Business Administration to the city of Irving.
This is one of a good resource. We have a booklet depending on what style you like.
Do you find that a lot of small business owners just aren't aware of the programs available today?
Yes, that is definitely one of the biggest issues that small businesses face. So we host mixers, coffee breaks, different networking events, and try to interact a lot with the Irving Chamber, the Hispanic Chamber as well, just to make sure that they know that resources are out there and they do have help.
How is Irving as a location for a small business?
I love it, actually, because we have a lot of, like, corporate nearby, and we have a lot of, like, families in the area.
Brittany Beenham owns Salad Station on North MacArthur Boulevard.
We're salad bars, self-serve.
And she feels love during this National Small Business Week.
It feels good. I like to have something like this outside of work, because I am usually at the store almost every day. So something like this is like a night off and something fun for me to celebrate, you know, owning the small business.
Along with celebrating, this event at the Rayleigh Underground is also about networking, because opportunities for connections and growth are always priorities for small business.
We thank them for investing in Irving.
And you can see more business and economic development stories on our playlist at youtube.com/thecityofirving. Irving's Independence Day celebration, called Sparks and Stripes, will be two days of red, white, and boom. Thursday, July 3, will feature fireworks and a drone show, and new this year, a patriotic flyover. Also, music by country singer Kaffé Anderson and the high-energy Midtown 10. Friday morning, July 4, will be the Downtown Parade, followed by live music, games, and more in Heritage Park. Applications to participate in the parade are due on June 18. Find the application and more details at irvingtx.gov/sparks. School just let out for the summer, but the Irving Schools Foundation is already looking ahead to the start of the next school year. Each year, we show you how volunteers prepare backpacks for families in need, and this is the time that the foundation is collecting those supplies and backpacks. Donations can be dropped off at any Irving fire station through July 11. Last year, volunteers working with the Irving Schools Foundation distributed a record-setting 7,500 backpacks, and they are looking to surpass that total this year. Some residents are voicing concerns about people illegally disposing of used tires. Here are some things to keep in mind. Solidway Services will not collect tires through regular curbside pickup. However, Irving residents can take up to four passenger car tires a year to the Hunter Farrel landfill. Additional tires can be disposed of for $5 each. Charges for illegal dumping can range from a Class C misdemeanor to a state jail felony. Report illegal dumping to the Irving Police Department's non-emergency line, that's 972-273-1010. We had a chance to share some of our experience and knowledge with our peers in South Texas. Robert Sheek and I spoke about video storytelling to local government employees attending the TAMEO Region 7 Conference on South Padre Island. TAMEO stands for Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers. We shared examples of our work and explained the techniques we use to share Irving stories with you. And along with speaking, we got to listen to some of the other presenters and gain from their expertise. Thanks to TAMEO and the city of McAllen for the invitation. We were proud to be part of it. Welcome to ICTN's Pets of the Week with Egan Dobson from Irving Animal Services, and Desmond, who is super chill.
He's very chill. You would never know that he's actually seven months old and still considered a puppy. Desmond, we have him as like a shepherd mix. He is like this most of the time, so he unfortunately gets overlooked a lot. But in Desmond's case, he is super, like, dog-oriented. He needs a friend who's confident around people to show him, you know, people are okay, and it's okay, you know, to be friends with somebody. It's not that he doesn't love people, he just needs a little bit more confidence.
We have seen him out playing in the yard. He knows how to have fun, too.
Oh, he is so dog-friendly. It's insane. We actually use him to test other dogs as well. And he loves to play with his friend Magnolia, which you'll see in the video, as well as some adult dogs. And he's got the cutest little stubby tail, too.
Ed, there's a special right now, especially for summer. Tell us about this.
Yeah, sun's out, tongue's out. Any dog 50 pounds or more is actually free to go home for that whole week in June.
We don't want to only talk about dogs. We want to talk about cats, too, because there's a large selection of cats.
Yeah, so since kitten season's happening, and we're currently in the middle of it, we do have kittens that are now old enough and available for adoption. But we don't just have kittens, we also have full-grown cats as well.
We also have some great updates from our segment last time, some people were really watching.
Yeah, Eeyore has been adopted, and Chicken Little as well, and they both saw the video and came and adopted.
That's great. Now here you have a lot of interest in roosters now.
Yeah, now everybody keeps asking us if we have any more chickens, which we don't, thank goodness. All of them have been adopted.
That's great. We'll still play the sound just for good measure, in case you forgot. And Desmond here, still looking for a home at the Irving Animal Care Campus. Thanks, Egan.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And you can find the Irving Animal Care Campus at 4140 Valley View Lane. You can also check out the websites you see on the screen for the latest operating hours and to see more adoptable animals. The Irving Golf Club is drawing a lot of players. On the next City Source, see some of the improvements recently completed that are making it even more attractive to golfers. Ed will take you inside the Junior Police Academy to see what young people are learning about law enforcement this summer. Those stories and much more next time on City Source. Here is how to connect with us, and please make note of our new email address. It's ictn@irvingtx.gov. Our YouTube channel is youtube.com/thecityofirving. We hope you will subscribe and hit that like button and share the videos you watch. Also, we always appreciate it when you leave us some positive comments. And you can look for updates on events and initiatives across the major social media platforms at the City of Irving. And that's it for this edition of City Source. Thanks for watching. Stay safe, and we'll see you next time.
Local artists and musicians will gather here at the Outdoor Plaza at Toyota Music Factory on June 14 for the Local Arts Festival. Support the heart of the community through art, music, and culture in one inspiring space from 5 till 11 p.m. Parking is free with a valid QR code. This may not yet look like Disney's Lion King Jr., since these kids are just starting to work on their production in their summer camp, but wait until you see what these first through ninth graders can accomplish in just a couple weeks. The full performance by the Irving Youth Theater is at 7 p.m. on June 17 at Carpenter Hall. What better way to exercise in the Texas heat than in water? You could join in fitness classes here at the new Lee Aquatic Park, join folks at Cimarron, or at the Heritage Aquatic Center. Go online to see class schedules.
We are hosting the Pre-Father's Day Harlem Nights event. We're partnering with the Irving Arts Council, so we're looking forward to that. It's definitely somewhere you would want to be. We have hors d'oeuvres as well as mimosas. It's all free. It comes with the show. We have two... We have two national recording artists. Not only Mike Walker and his band, but we have Sharice Mackey. Michael Walker is known around town. He has a huge following. He's from the Dallas area. Jazz is a universal type of language that we all love and embrace, and everyone loves dressing up in the 19th, 20th, and 30th theme. So I think it would be an awesome time for everyone to come together, sit back, laugh, enjoy the jazz, take pictures, enjoy the mimosas and free hors d'oeuvres, and just enjoy the night. Come together as a community and all be as one.
Cultural celebration. We honor Irving's diversity with live music, dance, food, and much more at this year's fusion.
Diversity is extremely important because it helps the community grow.
Season finale. The Lone Star Youth Orchestra concludes its 26th season with a concert featuring the winners of their annual concerto competition.
The crowd, it hypes me up so much, and when they clap after a performance, I just feel electric.
Arts and crafts. Children and their parents let out their creative and artistic side at Irving Arts Center's second Sunday Fun Day program.
We have a teaching artist here that has planned out an activity, and they will, the family just come in, all the supplies are provided, it's free.
And in feature flicks, I review the conclusion to Tom Cruise's epic franchise, Mission Impossible: The Final Reckoning.
I need you to trust me one last time.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to Irving Spotlight.
We're going to go ahead and talk about the radio network, infrastructure, and staffing.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Chad Powell, Chief Technology Officer. And today, we'll be talking about the exciting world of radio network infrastructure and some recommended or proposed changes to staffing and the way we support the radio network. The Wireless Infrastructure and Communications Team is responsible for our land-mobile radio system, but just to give you a brief overview of all the things that they do, it is a seven-member team currently. They support our land-mobile radio system primarily, which has six sites and four dispatch centers. They outfit all of the vehicles, including 300, over 300 for police and fire, and that's putting all the technology in car video, computers, modems, radios, sirens, and lights. They also support the citywide fiber network, so currently that's at 36 miles of city-owned fiber, and we're more than doubling that with our current projects that we have ongoing. We have 26 outdoor warning sirens that alert citizens when there's severe weather. We have 12 parks currently with outdoor Wi-Fi, and that is expanding as well. We have weather stations. We have cameras that utilize the FUSE's crime intelligence that helps PD track suspects across the city. And then they also support the back hall for the wireless network as well as 911 recording. So we currently have a Motorola radio system. It went live in 2012. It's a four-site simulcast P25 system, and simulcast is just a fancy word for it broadcasts and receives the traffic all at the same time. So if I speak into a radio, all four of those sites are going to broadcast at the same time. Our existing 10-year contract expires in October of this year, and we're currently paying about $1.38 million a year. They will no longer honor a 10-year agreement. The most they will do is six. And with the hardware refresh, we're looking at an increase to $3.74 million a year over the next six years if we continue to stay with Motorola. Now, there are pros. They are the, undisputably, the market leader in land-mobile radio. It's incredibly highly available. Their system averages 45 seconds of downtime a year, I'm sorry, a quarter, and that is typically only for our planned maintenance. The downside is that as Luscalinas has continued to develop, and with all the high rises and everything, we do have poor in-building radio coverage. The two-site core is not as resilient as a distributed system, and its complex architecture makes it so that we can't support it on our own. So we have to rely on Motorola and pay them to support it for us. And then with the name Motorola, also comes the high cost for the brand name. Is there another option? Yes, there is. We are exploring the opportunity to expand upon our EF Johnson solution. We currently have three sites that have that brand and that solution that we acquired via a grant. It's P25 compliant, and that's just a national standard that means that the huge investment that we already have made in our portable and in-vehicle radios will continue to work. We don't have to replace all of those if we were to make a switch. It is a distributed architecture, which means that each site can function entirely on its own without the reliance of a core, unlike the Motorola system. It's significantly less expensive in terms of annual maintenance. We can support it with our staff in-house, but this transition does require an investment in additional personnel and equipment. It would also open the opportunity to pursue charge-back models for cost recovery with other agencies. This is currently in use from the perspective of the DFW Airport. They use EF Johnson as well as Irving Airport via that grant that I just mentioned. The other good thing about EF Johnson is their national corporate headquarters is also located here in Irving. I know this is a lot of data to throw at you at once, but this is a chart of the cost over a 10-year period. The first year, it would be a higher investment in terms of relative to pursuing that $3.7 million with Motorola, but that's for one-time costs. So that's the vehicles and the building modifications and everything necessary to support this model. Over the 10-year period, we're looking at a cost avoidance of $12.7 million. And to sweeten the deal, EF Johnson will also give us an entirely new hardware refresh in year seven of the deal, so that would extend the life of that equipment out another eight to 10 years. The other high cost for the first year is that as we would be building out EF Johnson, we would still have to support the Motorola system, so we would be double-dipping in terms of the annual maintenance. So that would be a higher cost that first year, but as you can see in the chart, after that first year, the cost significantly favors EF Johnson as compared to Motorola. So the annual cost for EF Johnson is $800,000 a year. We would need to bolster significantly our communications team, which would be nine full-time employees and then one reclass for the manager of that team. The one-time cost itemized are $840,000 for tools and equipment, $100,000 for building modifications to support the crew, and then four new vehicles for the field crew at $340,000. I did talk about cost recovery, so we do have at least a couple of cities that are anxiously watching what we're doing with EF Johnson, and as their contracts with Motorola come to an end, they would be eager to partner with us and allow us to build out their own network for them, and then that would be a way to recover some costs. So if we were to partner with one city, starting in fiscal year '27, '28, the initial setup charge for them would be $265,000, and then $165,000 ongoing. And so if you look at that 10-year period, skipping the first two because we'll be working on our own setup, you're looking at about $2.67 million in cost recovery, and that's conservative. We feel like there's more than just two cities that would be willing to partner with us, but just sticking conservatively, we did an example of two cities. On the left, you'll see the current org chart as it stands today. Just keep in mind that they don't directly support the radio system. If there's a major outage or a need for support, we're on the phone with Motorola, and they have people out to work on it for us. So the new org chart, you'll see the positions in blue are necessary to, are the new positions, and they're necessary to be able to support this on our own. And I will add that this is, supporting a system on our own is standard practice for us. The best example I can give is our network infrastructure. We hire Cisco-certified technicians, and they are more than capable of maintaining and deploying switches and routers and firewalls. That's our preferred model, and then if we need help, we can go to the manufacturer. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Questions, thoughts? Chris, you and I had a little discussion on this. You want to give us some insight on your thoughts?
Yeah, could you please go back to slide number five, Chad, if you would? There you go. Thank you. Mayor and Council, as you can see, looking at the EF Johnson, that first-year cost for fiscal year '25, '26 is estimated right now to be about $4.8 million. We have budgeted and baked into our base budget 1.4 million. So if we were to move forward with EF Johnson, we'd have to find another $3.5 million, at least for that first year. Nonetheless, even with Motorola, we're going to have to find another $2, just under $2.4 million. So either way, we know we're going to have to be spending more dollars. I really do like Chad's proposal of moving forward with EF Johnson. I like the idea of hopefully signing on other cities. My understanding is from you and Benny, Chad, that there's strong, strong interest there. And working with those other cities, they'd still have to make the one-time investment as well. That would be up to their councils and their staff to make that investment. But nonetheless, we would then, if we have a $4.8 million minus the $1.4 million we've already got baked in, so we know we have those resources, we have to come up with about $3.4, $3.5. For the one-time costs, you have those listed there, Chad, about $1.28 million. You have that also on the next slide on Slide 6. Brett and I, Brett had a good idea. We could, assuming, we'd have to look at the details of that, but we could use, do a five-year tax note on those one-time costs for the building, the vehicles, and the tools and equipment specifically. And actually, I think it'd be a two-year tax note, I think is what you had potentially mentioned. And we could just use the fund balance that we have in our debt service reserve account, which is high enough to be able to absorb that. So that way, on those one-time costs, issuing those two-year tax notes, we could take care of the, potentially the one-time cost. We'll get a little bit more detail into that, make sure we'll look at exactly what Chad has proposed there. But nonetheless, for next year, and we have to move forward on this next year, we don't have a choice, that's still about a $2 million hit, just increase for next year. So we're going to have to come up with two additional million more dollars in order to make this first year work. Am I missing anything on that, Brett?
Well, more good news is that legislature didn't take that option away from us, so that's still on the table.
Bless our hearts.
And just to let everyone know, once we put money into the debt service fund, we can only use it for debt service. We can't take it back out. Using a short-term tax note is a way to do that. If you recall from our discussions back in February on fund balance, our target is to have 30% of revenue fund balance in both the general fund and the debt service. And we're currently in around 65% to 70% in debt service. There's excess funds available there, and we get penalized for having too high a fund balance in our debt service fund when it comes time to do the tax calculations each year. So it seems like a win-win.
And this would be an initial start of that. I think there's other ideas as well that we have that we can use some of that debt service reserves for some of our other projects that we've even been talking about today. So we'll use that as some financial strategy as well. But nonetheless, we're still looking at a two-plus million dollar hit for next year, two-plus million.
So Chris, for the simple-minded person here, basically, we're talking 1.4 million because we'd had to come up with 2 million for this year, so we're going to spend that whether we stay or whether we go. So really, we're only talking 1.4 million.
In the end, yes, that's what the cost. But then the good news is, as you go to in the previous slide, those costs do come down. Chad's anticipating basically a $2 million cost for the next year, and we already have 1.4 baked in, so we won't need as much the second year as we'd be setting aside the first year. So that's the good news.
Well, and if we stay with it, we're going to have to come up with more. I mean, that's, again, the simple-minded person, it's a matter of 1.4, and over the next few years, we save enough to cover that 1.4. Plus, by having this system that we control, that gives, does that give us a better opportunity than to be at the mercy of, well, that's a bad way to say it. Does that help control our costs in the future because we would, if we want to do something in the future, we got to do this, and it's going to cost us more? And we basically, it looks like their costs are going to continue to go up, Motorola's.
Yeah, and especially when, was it a six-year deal, I think is what you said?
Six years max.
And you're assuming that would still be the same even past that, which it most likely would not be.
It will go up after that.
It will definitely go up. So that savings is going to be even higher because Motorola will go up after that six years. So in the end, this is a big hit. It's a big hit. We have to do it. We need to do it, but I'm just giving you the heads-up. Unfortunately, all, it's just a big hit.
Well, it's going to cost us a couple more. It's going to cost us 3.4, and we got to do one of the two. So really, you're talking 1.4, and you're talking savings in the future. And we've got a local company we can probably lean on a lot more than we can Motorola if we have challenges. So I would say it's something...
And I'll just add that every city around here, almost every city uses Motorola, and they're all facing the impact of these rising costs, so that this puts us in a very favorable position to partner with them for future chargebacks.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, to me, it makes sense to be able to put something in that we know that other people are going to want to partner with us on and reduce our costs as well. And if we get more people involved on this side than the other side, it'll be a better network as well. Al?
Yeah, I guess if I'm looking at the numbers, that it's about 40% plus on hardware, basically, materials, and then the other quote-unquote 40% is actually staffing.
Staffing, yes, sir.
Okay. From the standpoint, and maybe I'm using my military background, is we never had personal radios. They were pulled, and then when you shipped it in and out, then people used that same radio. Do we issue the radios or whatever to the individual, or do we pull them?
We do a little bit of both. Police department, they pull their radios, and, but we have radios all over the city, so we do a bit of both. Some are assigned to individuals, some are pulled.
That's just usually a savings cost of materials as much as you can, but, okay, thank you.
All right. Chris, you want us to give you some direction?
Yeah, just, yeah, council direction and thoughts from council extends this direction on Motorola versus EF Johnson. Staff recommendation as we move forward on EF Johnson, just want to get council thoughts and consensus direction on that.
I'm fine with the staff recommendation to move forward with the...
Thank you.
Yeah, you have consensus.
Very good. We'll bake that into the budget coming up. Thank you.
All right. Brad, you survived RTC.
Yeah.
You can tell us all about 2.0 in your spare time, but not right now. John, we have a legislative update and some gentleman with you.
He must have seen a different presentation, isn't he?
John Wees, legislative officer, for those of you who are new. Uh, so we're gonna wrap up the 89th session. Thankfully, it's over. Uh, it was, my colleagues and I, and I'll introduce our lobby team in a second, always talk to each other during the session, and we always say, oh, this is the worst session ever. This was the worst session ever, as far as cities went. Uh, there were, there's usually one or two really bad trains coming down the track. There were a dozen. And we were lucky to have escaped with as little harm as we did, not saying it's not what, the bad things that happened aren't significant, because they are. Uh, but, uh, one thing, just one little anecdote, I'll make this really quick, about the attitude towards cities. I went into a legislator's office fairly late in the session, asking them to take a floor amendment on a bill. And the legislator had actually asked for the language. Gave it to his chief of staff. That person was not interested in talking to me. I followed up a couple days later, said, you know, what's going on with this? And, uh, they said, well, we, we had a meeting of the stakeholders. We were not included in that meeting. And so the attitude is, even these things that affect cities, you are not a stakeholder in the process. And I think everybody here could have some version of a story like that. Uh, the bill passed without the language that we tried to get in there. So with that, I'm gonna introduce our lobby team. They have been great for us. Snapper Carr with focused advocacy, Brandon Agamalian, Kurt Sidlitz, all done, uh, a lot of time and a lot of late hours. Uh, but I'm gonna turn it over to Snapper to do the presentation.
Mayor, members of council, uh, thank you. Snapper Carr with focused advocacy and partner in general counsel, and like I said, by our partners and our other colleagues that aren't here today. Um, also very honored to, to work for y'all. I know we have a few new faces here, but also a lot of longtime friends, uh, both on council and staff, uh, that we've worked with over the years. And I, I like to remind, Irving holds a special place for us. It was Brandon and I's first, uh, city client when we, we left, uh, our respective positions around the Capitol and at the Texas Municipal League to start a practice. And so we've enjoyed getting to be a part of the Irving team and, and by extension, the community, as y'all have been through a lot of things over the years. Uh, we're now in our, our 21st year of working with y'all. Um, so it's, it's been a, a privilege. And John's right. Uh, unfortunately, we've all of us have been around the Capitol and legislative sessions, uh, for some period of time, uh, that, um, we always think this is the toughest one. And it must just be that the one that you get through is the toughest, because that has been the reality. It's been the reality for, um, what we have discussed about local governments as well, and the relationship between the legislature and cities and your delegations and, and how we interact with them has definitely changed over our 30 years of working, uh, in and around, uh, local government, uh, with the legislature. Um, of course, it was the 89th Texas Legislature. We'll be convening in 2027 for the 90th. Um, that certainly starts to, to, to age us when we start thinking about the numbers that we've been through. This is our core team. My three partners that are here, Lindley Hurd, uh, is our general and legislative counsel as well. Uh, she had a baby at the end of session, so she's, she's doing some, some additional work now, uh, and sends her regards. Uh, your delegation, you have a very seasoned, uh, and then of course, some new folks as well. Um, and it's a bipartisan group. And, you know, of course, Senator Tan Parker is the GLP caucus chair, was voted. He, uh, has a number of high-profile positions within the Senate. Uh, of course, was a, a very, uh, tenured House member, uh, that we worked with. Nathan Johnson, uh, also considered, um, uh, a, a worker, uh, within the Senate apparatus, um, respected for his review of bills and due diligence. He was on a lot of the committees, business and commerce, and water, and rule, and transportation, as you will see there, are ones that we found ourselves in front of a lot of issues. So Senator Johnson was often the one carrying some of the policy discussion for cities, particularly on the Business and Commerce Committee, and I would say on transportation as, as, as well. Um, oop, back up real quick. The Rafael Lanchilla, although a smaller portion of y'all's, also a very senior member, very city-friendly, I'll come back, he was, uh, this session appointed a new position, the standing subcommittees that were created. He was the Chair of the Telecommunications and Broadband Subcommittee on the House State Affairs Committee. That ended up being a real important committee, a subcommittee for cities, because a lot of right-of-way matters went through there. A lot of franchise fee or rental items, some very bad bills and very costly bills for cities in particular were assigned to that. And but for kind of the work and due diligence that Chairman Lanchilla had, uh, we probably, unfortunately, would have had different outcomes on those. And so we'll, we'll come back to those later in the presentation. Terry Mesa on, uh, you see her committees, uh, and Representative, uh, Cassandra Garcia Hernandez, you will note, uh, had a very full list of, of committee assignments anytime a freshman is appointed to appropriations. Uh, that is something that generally is a signal that, that leadership in that chamber thinks they have some, some good potential for, for being a good working member, and they learn a lot when they get those appointments as a freshman. She was also on the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, which was a newly-created committee that, that literally hundreds of bills, uh, that affected cities, uh, ran through. Um, and uh, she was a, a very good voice and helped carry a lot of the city discussion on that committee for us as well. Um, kind of the, just again, give y'all what, how we started the bipartisan breakdown of the session. It's 20 Republicans, 11 Democrats in, in the, uh, Senate Chamber, of course, controlled by the, we don't have a Senate President, per se. It's Lieutenant Governor, of course, Dan Patrick, that, that operates in that, that regard. Very, uh, great deal of authority over the flow and control of the Senate. After a very, if y'all recall, very active, uh, December and January, um, we eventually got a new, uh, House Speaker in Dustin Burrows. Uh, we have 88 Republicans, 62 Democrats. There were 31 freshman members, which is a very big class in, in the House. Um, some very active members, um, some folks like Mitch Little and, and others that, that really stood out. There were others within that group, some for their, their ability, some for being considered obstructionist, is to be honest, to, to it, um, at some level. But a good mix and some very talented freshmen, I think, that you will see being very long-term members of the Texas Legislature or other positions in state government. Three new freshman members, uh, and a change of partisanship in, in a seat there, uh, in the freshman side of the Senate as well. Um, wanted to give y'all a little bit of, of the statistics, because they do tell a big part of the legislative story. We had a record number of bills filed, uh, for the Texas Legislature. When you add in the joint resolutions, the proposed constitutional amendments, we were over 9,000 pieces of legislation filed. But of actual Senate and House bills, there were 7,000, 8,719. We tracked over 2,500 of those as having direct impacts on cities in some way, whether that could be good or bad. I hate to say it, unfortunately, most were, were kind of viewed in the negative and, or at least to fix category. Certainly, there were some good ones as well. And, but, uh, we say this in our presentations, and I think it's worth repeating, because it is the context that we operate in and that you all have to advocate in. And that is that cities, by far and a way, without a close second, have the most items before the Texas Legislature out of any public or private entity, without, again, a close second. Uh, and that was very much seen, as John mentioned, this time around. Um, of my 30 years of working with local governments around the legislature, as John said, we'll get two to three really big captivating, kind of change the way you do operations sort of bills, sometimes that, that take a lot of energy and focus of the local government advocacy effort and the local government, uh, efforts at the Capitol. Um, we had 15 to 20 of those bills this session, and that, and that's not a, a stretch. Uh, and those range from very serious bills that would alter your financial tools and the way that you do your budgeting. I heard the, the word tax anticipation notes earlier in one of your items. Those would have been prohibited under multiple bills. Uh, issuance of debt would have been cut off after certain points. Uh, very, very, the use of COs, very, very significant. I would say that is the highest area. And we'll go to the next one, which is land use and development processes, that we had just monumental bills. Um, the vast majority of those, in the final couple of weeks of session, went by the wayside. And, and we're gonna get to a section that goes over a couple, because that was a large part of this session. There were 1,213 bills passed. That's the lowest percentage in modern history of bill passages. Um, 750 of those were passed in the final 11 days of session. So we were really back-end loaded. And when we also, I would note for you, when that happens, the system is moving so fast, that the level of due diligence that occurs at the committee level, and even once it gets placed onto an item for consideration on the floor, is not the same as what it is in March or even earlier April of a session. And so we found ourselves in that position, given the number of bills that cities had. We had issues everywhere in the legislature, every committee in the House and the Senate, and they were important and big issues that y'all cared about and cities around the state cared about. And, and many of them were not in positions that we wanted them to be in, uh, we'll just say. Um, looking at, there were 289 bills that passed that were off of that track. So again, to just reiterate to y'all the level of impact that the legislature has on tools for your departments and your citizens, nearly a quarter of the bills, one in four, that passed the Texas Legislature, applied directly to cities in some way. Again, some good, some bad, some just making changes that we were indifferent about, but, but nonetheless, that is the largest segment of empty entities, public or private, that had bills passed. To give you a little context, large industrial utilities, like electric utilities that we're used to dealing with, will have had less than 20 bills in a given session, this session that passed, that would apply to them, uh, for a big, multi-billion-dollar utility industry that's regulated by the state. So I, I wanted to spend some time on that, because it was a very important aspect of this session. Going into session, these were the stated priorities of the governor. Something passed on every single one of these items, uh, that the governor had rated as priorities, and these were also items that were placed into his, uh, emergency, state-of-the-state items. Um, and we'll come back to, uh, housing affordability and availability, because it affects a number of the land use items, uh, that we, we will talk about. Uh, these track, I would say the Lieutenant Governor probably had the, the single most, um, successful individual session I've ever seen of an elected official for passage of their, and I think my colleagues would agree, uh, for passage of their stated, uh, agenda. Uh, he, he named 40 bills and pretty much went down the line of passing those bills. Certainly out of the Senate, not all of them passed the Texas Legislature, but the vast majority did. Some were rolled into House bills. Um, but you will see, this is a long list. There's some that are still under considerations. Of course, this session was, uh, kind of predicated on the debate over school choice and the voucher program. Um, that passed early on and, uh, pretty quickly through the chambers. You can see, there are big topics on all of these, up and down the line. Of course, Senate Bill 3, which is the ban on THC, is still being considered by the governor, very much in, in the news right now. Uh, SB 4, which is part of the property tax relief package that is being increased. You can go down this list, though, and start looking at various ones. Uh, SB 15, which is removable barriers to affordable housing. That was kind of the density, tiny lots bill, as it was labeled. Um, there was Senate Bill 19, which was a prohibition on local government cities from, from hiring consultants, having internal positions, and are joining, uh, state trade associations that also advocated, uh, on your position. That, that died in the House, in the House State Affairs Committee. Um, again, long list of very successful items, some of which very much, uh, impacted or applied to us in some form or fashion within these, but, but the land use ones being, being the biggest item. You go to the Speaker Burrows priorities, and, and it's worth noting, when Speaker Burrows came in, we also got a brand-new set of chairmen and new makeup to these committees, and even some new committees, as I mentioned. Um, what that does is, it, it, those, we don't have a history of how those chairman are gonna handle certain issues when they take over, how they're gonna view, for example, Chairman Gary Gates was the new, uh, out of the, the Baytown area, was the new Land and Resource Management Chair. Well, that was where all our land use items go, and he brought a very different perspective, uh, to that, and, and affected a lot of how these different priorities, uh, were passed. The Speaker also had a very successful session of, of establishing what he wanted and, and staking these low priority bill numbers out and, uh, um, moving on. And one I will, we'll come back to down there at the bottom, that I think is probably one of the most profound bills that I've seen filed in my time affecting local governments, and that was HB 19. Would have been restrictions on your local debt. It would have set a hard cap of 20%. If you had a debt-to, to tax revenue ratio beyond that, you'd be prohibited from issuing any other debt, including voter-approved debt. So there is no other way around it for you or your citizens. And that very, very much was supported and had to be fought to, to keep in committee. It was, it was the chair, as it said, a, a priority of the Speaker, and it was chaired by the Ways and Means Chairman was the author of the bill, excuse me. Uh, so again, that is a topic that we will see back. That bill did a lot of different things, uh, in it, including moving all of your bond elections, uh, to November, uh, to, to that sole time, uh, and some other things throughout. Very serious bill and a very serious topic that's gonna be back. Again, long list, one of y'all's priority topics there, HB 21, elimination of traveling housing finance corporation exemptions. Uh, that bill, again, a pretty high-profile topic. This bill made other reforms besides just eliminating that, but Gary Gates was the author of that, and we'll, we'll come back to it again. Um, wanted to note, this session was somewhat different, too, in that last session, as y'all will recall, we had pretty serious fights between the House and the Senate. And we, and we saw those same things. They happen, uh, every session, kind of, uh, the maneuvering of the politics of session. However, um, it, last session between Lieutenant Governor and Speaker Phelan at that time, was just an all-out, very public dispute and, and fight with one another. Um, I would say that Speaker Burrows and Lieutenant Governor, uh, Patrick have, have figured out a way to, to work. Um, and I think are more aligned, uh, than they are often at odds, at least individually. Now, the chambers they lead may, may be different, and particularly because Speaker Burrows has more Democrat, uh, influence in, in that, in that chamber, with 62, two members of, of the Democratic Party. Some have supported him. So, but these, this is something to watch, and it's certainly something that impacts the, the flow of the legislature as we go on. Um, Irving priorities, we mentioned, uh, working with other cities heavily impacted by the HFC matter. Um, I will note, there's a lot of court activity going on with this bill, too, now, that, that seems to be, starting to be favorable towards local governments. Um, and, uh, of course, this bill was effective immediately upon signing of, of the governor. It also has a transition period that requires those entities that, um, that already were granted this exemption, if you will, from having a two-year period to seek, in their, outside of their jurisdiction, to seek the approval from taxing entities within the, where they're located, or those sunset after two years, which was a pretty good thing, given that they were, some of these in, in the North Texas area were for as long as 99-year agreements. Um, so, so good things, but certainly more to do. Uh, the DART-related bill that, that everyone's very aware of, that made reforms, uh, to the DART statute, uh, died in calendars. It did pass the, the House, uh, Transportation Committee, um, and, uh, onto the House calendars. I would say we had a very late hearing as, as... And on to the House calendars, I would say we had a very late hearing, as Councilman can attest that was there. I think we finished up close to 3:00 AM that day, that morning. But all of that was during a period of time where we were going. This topic, of course, I think will be back, given the seriousness and the debate, of course, both locally and at the Capitol, with those committees that oversee the respective topic.
On that one...
Yes, Mayor.
So that we don't get lost in the shuffle. The DART Board, you know, they spent a ton of money and hired a bunch of lobbyists and pulled all their feathers out of their hat, but as recently as yesterday, they basically have backed down from everything. They took a vote where they said, no, they're not going to change the makeup of the board. No, they're not going to require three-quarter override. And no, they're not going to look at the 25% reduction. So really, they have basically said no to everything. Brad brought this up, but I don't know if it would be worth our while to put together a letter to send to those House members that basically says, you know, the minute it was over, they took all their support, all their toys, and went home. And basically, because we were not able to make a change in it, they basically just thumbed their nose at us, went back to doing what they're doing. Because I know that the people that I talked to, they were very concerned that something needed to be done. I mean, you had Yvonne Davis and others that basically stepped up and said, look, this has been here three different times, and we're tired of it, it needs to get fixed. Well, DART goes down, tells everybody how wonderful they are, and how great they're going to be, and how good they're going to be to everybody. And it really didn't have an effect on us, because with us, we just give them a bunch of money, they don't give us any service, and there's not much we can do about it. That's the bottom line. But it did, the 25% did allow quite a bit of money back to, or the 5%, excuse me, to six of the other cities. So it'll be interesting to see how they respond to the whole thing. But I would like to, upon your recommendation, Brad, put a letter together to the Transportation Committee to just say, just FYI, this is a reason why we wanted your help, because we knew that left to their own vices, they would not work with us.
Mayor, I actually, and I'm glad you brought that up. I think the follow-up, and certainly having, you know, being in attendance and listening to the testimony that evening on the bill, and just the dialogue around the bill as a whole at the Capitol, not just at that hearing, that very much was part of what DART said, which was, we're making these changes as bill interferes with that potential ability for us to work collaboratively and give us a chance, was what they said to that committee. And I think it is certainly, we would think that it is useful, and especially while it's fresh on the mind, to let those Transportation Committee members and the delegation members that were most impacted by this know that those decisions almost immediately after session seemed to be going in reverse. And I would think that it would be very, I think it would gain the attention of those committees, for sure.
It was Brad's idea, I'm just bringing it forward.
Yeah, I think, well, I got to learn a lot about the Houston toll system and what a mess that is, apparently. And then we dug into this, and that was a consistent comment amongst the lobbyists, and DART was like, hey, just send us home, we're trying to work this out, we're going to have it all worked out. And all of us on the other side, in the minority, were saying, the only reason they're even to the table is because this is on, this is an option for them. And we were told, no, that's not the case, so this is showing we're right. But I'd say the committee members have repeatedly mentioned that, like, well, you've told us that three times. Now, today at RTC, Michael Morris said that it cannot go back. Next session, it's almost like he's sure something will happen. And it was pointed out by several cities, including me alluding to it, that 2026 is a magic year. And if somehow DART survives 2026, 2027 is another magic year, because the legislature will be back. So they're bringing that back for the next meeting to go forward with a policy to change the whole thing. Councilmember Mendelson from Dallas is very fed up with it and says, it can't be everybody in for a penny. We need to have a whole region, and it needs to be equal, and it can't be a penny, because nobody's going to be paying a penny. And so she, her comments were, it's going to soon be the Dallas Transit Authority again, if this isn't corrected. So the idea is, there's urgency to correct this right now at this level. If DART stays dug in, it's going to be contrary to all the comments we were talking about today, that we do need a solution. Because like I said, if that bill was a DART killer, what is, what are several cities getting out of DART? What would that mean? And I think that would mandate, I mean, if a special does come up, I highly doubt they'll be interested in this, but I think we ought to at least try to squeeze it in, because now we've got additional ammunition of, like, all solutions are off the table. So that was my idea, just on the basis of that hearing. We were sitting there all night and into the morning, and the members were pretty consistent, even members who had previously been hostile to any sort of reform, were very much on board with, look, we're tired of it, there needs to be a solution. And so I don't, I don't think I'll ever completely understand the machinations of, like, chubbing and killing and calendars and all this. But I thought, you know, it had a good chance. And then, if only we could do that in Irving City Council, you could just run out the clock on something and stuff doesn't get heard. But I think, I think that letter would be worth it, but I think there's some more serious push with Michael, seeing great peril the next two years.
Thank you.
Mayor, and that probably leads us, unless there's more questions in that space, that probably leads us to the next item, which is really at the base of y'all's priorities and at the center of almost all of these discussions, which is, we work with your team and y'all's agenda to try to help preserve as much local authority and community decision-making tools as possible. Not to get to a particular outcome, but that at least so that community issues, y'all will have the ability to resolve them or to navigate them here. And really, a large number of our fights at the Capitol now are about preemption, and preemption of tools that cities have traditionally held and been able to employ in a variety of spaces. And so from small fights over preemption to very large, sweeping fights, it's really at the basis of a lot of this discussion. One of the more, we have labeled here as an unexpected win, because this is something unexpected that occurred for cities, and I'll say it was certainly one of the highlights and positive, I think, outcomes, is traditionally, within the state budget, you do not see a lot of, I want to use the term earmark, because that's a bit loaded, but direct references to specific projects within an agency budget. Even, say, easiest one to identify is like Tech dot. You don't see a lot of local-related projects by name in the state budget. And just in general, cities don't get a lot of direct items. You all were awarded a $2.1 million appropriation rider, that your freshman, John, correct me if I don't get the, happened, because all the budget process gets finalized right at the end, but that your freshman state representative had put in the hopper for you for consideration ahead of that deadline.
She did ask for 7 million.
Yes, asked for 7 million, too, and rightfully so. She did smart and asked for more. Ultimately, cities typically do not see this. We saw a huge amount of direct appropriations to cities in a wide variety of spaces this time, particularly in the water, in wastewater space, that would be the largest. But we also saw airports, parks, various community projects that received state assistance with direct funding. We had a huge, almost record budget surplus, so that could have been some of that led to that. And we'll have to see if that continues as a reality going into the next one, but it definitely, to the tune of significant appropriations to a large number of cities.
Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Sure.
Snapper, I really appreciate that. If you go back to that previous slide, it's good to see that we're getting a portion of our $680 million that we send to the state, coming back to the city. And I just really want to thank Representative Hernandez, who carried the water, but to your team and to John for going out there and working with her, and then John, working with all our departments. And we put in a number of things, and to be able to get that, a direct appropriation, was just great work by Representative Hernandez. So just really want to do a shout-out to her and to John and you and the entire team for getting that.
I believe it's the only one she got for anybody.
She was exceptional this year. I mean, I was impressed with everything that she did, and she seemed to know her way around everything. And, you know, we have other representatives that have never brought any money home in eight or 10 years. So to be a freshman and do that was pretty outstanding.
She, like I said, she served on committee that we dealt with a lot of city-related issues and was very helpful in those regards. So we look forward to our continued work with her. Wanted to mention a few of the things that we labeled, and TML labels this in their wrap-up, the cutting room floor. And that is because these bills really did define a lot of the discussion about local government issues. They are some very significant bills. Most of them are very bad bills, in our view, in terms of their impact and scope, or at least would have some very significant consequences viewed that way. The issue, and I mentioned, you know, HB 23 really could have been in the land use or the development or the housing. It's really a bill about preemption of local processes, and that bill came very near passing. And in essence, it would have been a full deregulation and privatization of your permitting and planning review functions here at the city. It would have allowed for third-party review to be obtained by the developer or the person applying for the plans, and they would select their own engineer to certify that these plans complied with your local ordinances, and they would basically submit those to you, and then a permit would have to be issued. There's more minutia than that to it, but in essence, that's very much how the bill in its final form would have operated. And there was other items. So that issue will be back, and that issue really is what the governor labeled in his state-of-the-state, housing availability and affordability. And the discussion about that was the role that cities played in the development process. And a large number of advocacy groups with the builders, developers, Texas Realtors Association, the Texas Restaurant Association, we can go on down the list, lined up at hearings, both in the interim and during session, to say that was the case, that we, the cities, were kind of standing in the way of some of these housing issues. So that took up a great deal of time. It was a one bill and a large number of bills, priority bills, that were set forward. The other one, which is probably, and we won't go through all these, or we'd be here far too long, but the super preemption, I mentioned there were 15 to 20 large-scale, these are make-you-change-operation-type bills. This bill was an extension of the Death Star bill, as it was referred to last session, the super preemption bill that passed and is being challenged as unconstitutional. This added several different layers of statute to say that cities were also preempted. One of them, which was hard to understand, was the local government code. Said you were preempted from doing things in the local government code, which were tools that were passed to empower you to do things. So it was very hard to understand how that actually would work. But the more scary part of that bill was that it allowed for an individual, and gave very broad standing to any individual in the state, to say, the city of Irving is somehow violating some statute of state law, the local government code potentially that they were including, and to file that with the Attorney General's Office. And once filed, not proven, once filed, the Attorney General would then, until it was resolved, withhold 25% of your sales tax collections on a monthly basis that you receive from the state, and you would be prohibited from adopting a tax rate beyond the no new revenue rate, until that was resolved. And the decision of the Attorney General's Office was final and unappealable. And it is almost laughable if this bill wasn't real serious. It passed the Senate of the state of Texas in that form, and came out a committee in that form, and died on the last House calendar in that form this session. And so it was probably one of the worst bills that I've seen in my career, in terms of that provision and how far-reaching I think it could have been, had that piece been in. You would have had to have submitted all of your ordinances to the Attorney General's Office for review for compliance with state law before they could be enacted, was what they were setting up. And so hopeful that we don't see that again in that form. It definitely started to get a lot more attention as it went on and got further in the process, of course. But this bill was one of those ones, out of that 15 to 20 really bad bills that I mentioned, would have changed things. Land use was the other area. Again, it was almost a nonstop level of bills that would have altered. We mentioned HB 23 in kind of the development process. 673 was ADUs by right or vacation rentals, small, tiny homes, sort of authority to override local. We had a number of bills related to zoning changes that would have further reduced cities' authority, or, as I put it, existing landowners and neighborhoods' authority to interject in zoning changes. Another one, we had this in land use, but it's one that got, was the very serious attempt to say that cities could not, in their lease agreements of public venues, that a private entity that leased your convention center or a park or some public venue that you had for lease, could not, on their decision, prohibit the carrying of firearms to that entity. This was a fight over the state fair in the city of Dallas, but this bill applied statewide, and it applied to everything, your convention centers and others. So the CVB world was very involved in this at the end as well.
We got several calls on that from the Convention and Visitors Bureau group.
Yes. And so it died in calendars in the House, there at the end, and again. I'm going to skip over these final ones here on the hotel projects, because I'm going to ask Brandon to comment on that, on kind of what we see next on some of them.
Hey, Snapper, I have a question. So can I take my firearm into the Capitol? Because I didn't think I could.
You can.
I can?
Yes, sir, just not into a public meeting.
Okay.
And if you have a firearm concealed handgun license, you actually don't have to go through the metal detectors at the Capitol, you show it to them. It's an oddity. I tell people outside of Texas that, and they don't believe me, but it's, that is the way it works there. We mentioned SB 19 not passing, these debt limit bills, very big topics. I know Brett probably has seen plenty of alerts about these different topics over this. We had a large number of items here, I mentioned, that I was involved in, this shifting of utility relocation costs to cities. That was a cable industry bill that got filed, and it was estimated that would have shifted about, statewide, about $1 billion in relocation costs for public works projects in the state to the cities from the private sector. Luckily, that bill did not pass. That was one that I mentioned, that Raphael Lanchia Subcommittee played a very important role, and we had somebody that was willing to kind of listen to the city position on that and was very helpful in stopping that bill from gaining traction. Number of bills that would have required November-only elections or eliminated the May uniform election altogether, it's going to be another topic that will be back with, undoubtedly. The last one I will mention is HB 111. It died at the very end of session. It really had two components. One that dealt with the exceptions that you all... One, that dealt with the exceptions that you all could invoke to go into executive session, a particular attorney-client or pending litigation-related exception was changed. Ultimately, those kind of got fixed, and the bill, as it was at the end, was really just targeting the Texas Association of School Boards, Texas Association of Counties, and the Texas Municipal League, and applying the Open Records Act in full to them and their operations, despite them being private nonprofits. Ultimately, that bill did not pass, but it became pretty serious talk discussion about local governments. We're getting to the property tax relief portion. This is the provision of the two. There'll be constitutional amendments that will be considered in November that will extend. This is actually, and our number, the number for seniors is actually 200,000. There is a 10, but it's 140,000. It's extended to 200 for seniors. And then the HJR-1, on tangible personal property and business personal property, moves it from the current level to 200,000, which is a substantial jump in that. And then they set aside $51 billion to help fund that piece that they're paying for in the school M and O buy-down. We're not going to spend a lot of time on each of these. I want to get to the end. I know we've covered a lot of ground. But here again are some preemption bills. These didn't quite rise to the level of some of these other bad bills that we talked about that preempted us, but they certainly had effects, like the ability, this food truck bill expanded and limited ability on like food trailer parks and other areas. It got referred to as the free the taco truck bill as it was moving through the process. Land use. Again, you look at this list and know, these are the ones that passed, and they all were in some way limiting, they weren't empowering cities. These were a step back for us in all of these, or at least the lesser of impact. SB 15, as it passed, initially was statewide, and it said you couldn't have a minimum lot size of greater than 1,400 square feet. It now applies to a very small segment of properties on five-acre undeveloped lots, only in 17 cities statewide. Congratulations, y'all are one of those cities. The bill also now says 3,000 square foot as the minimum and other limitations that are within it. So it did change dramatically, but nonetheless, there is, allows for greater density within those certain conditions. Again, changes in certain financing. This was SB 924. It's the other one I wanted to point out, that Rafael Anchiya from y'all's and that Subcommittee played a great deal. As filed, this bill would have eliminated cable franchise fees quite potentially in their entirety. It also dealt with a streaming lawsuit against Hulu and Netflix and Disney that cities statewide are involved in. Ultimately, we negotiated that bill to where we removed the harmful cable provisions and protected y'all's existing revenues, to say that it couldn't change the obligation of an existing payer to the city. And that couldn't have been accomplished without Rafael Anchiya. There was a former state rep, Steve Woolens, that was also very involved on behalf of cities as an attorney on that matter as well. Again, there was discussions about less use of less lethal force weapons, a large number of items. One that's going to generate, and I think your city secretary is probably already well aware of this one, that they shifted the rule that for posting, it has to be three business days. And the irony of this is too much, so I have to say it. The bill had a bill analysis, and the first line of the bill said, "The intent of this bill is to stop local governments, cities specifically, from filing a posting notice on Fridays and having the meeting on Monday." The hearing that this bill passed in was filed on Friday and passed on Monday. Just saying. That's a fact. So what we were outlawing, we were doing. SB 7 is one that I wanted to note. It was a huge water infrastructure. I mentioned it was unprecedented, the level of money. There was billions that went into water and wastewater projects statewide. Senator Charles Perry was the author of this. It was a topic for all three of the state leaders. And ultimately, a commitment of $10 billion and a one-time investment of $7 billion has gone into water and water infrastructure statewide. That $10 billion is kind of going to be managed by the Water Development Board with some new funds and water supply funds and existing programs. And then there were earmarked provisions that went into water projects around the state. So big, big, big water session. And as you see, we also have the dedication of some of that money that'll be on the constitutional ballot. Kurt was very involved in the electric utility-related items. Senate Bill 6, which was a large load bill to continue to increase generation. We had to work real hard, and Kurt was very involved in these items, of protecting the ability of cities and city-owned utilities to have inspection authority over these backup power systems. The way these bills were filed originally, again, it would have preempted all city inspection. I would say our utility companies helped us fight back on these a little bit. They realized that maybe it was a bad idea not to have city inspectors looking at things that were connecting to the power grid. So something there. What's up next? And I'm going to ask my business partners maybe to come up and give a little of this too and just recap. But we wrote this just a few days ago and said special session is unlikely, and that was very much the mood. There was nothing that immediately was triggering this. We had a lot. I can tell you, the members themselves do not want special sessions, nor, of course, the staff. So it would win in a landslide not to have one, but the governor gets to call it. He got his major initiatives done, as we talked about. All the big-ticket items, his priorities were accomplished. However, in the last couple of days, and he has until June 22nd, by the way, to veto or to allow bills to become law without his signature. The last couple of days, there has been very serious discussion about whether a special session could be called to consider a mid-decade redistricting ahead of the congressional midterms for next time, which is something that's not unprecedented in Texas. It happened years ago when Tom Delay was the Majority Leader of Congress and kind of led that effort. It's unclear as to whether. All I can say is that's a very serious thing that's way, way above our pay grade. The president and the governor have had those discussions, as we understand directly about the potential of that. And there were meetings at the Capitol discussing it. So it's a real thing that's in discussion. Whether it happens or not, very too early to tell. We have included at the back end of this, the constitutional amendments that will be on the ballot, just for y'all to look at and to know. But if Kurt and Brandon, if y'all don't mind, come up just kind of as to what we have next on the agenda. I want to certainly answer any questions, but if y'all wanted to give some closing remarks about session as well.
It's been a long, a long five months, so I don't want to make this any longer than it needs to be by talking about it any more than necessary. Snapper did allude to the hotel legislation. City of Irving was one of the first cities to ever be added to that statutory structure that we have whereby you get to help finance your convention center and/or hotel convention center. Y'all successfully used that with a Weston project several years ago. You had the, and you continue to have the authority to use that for a, call it second project or third project. Really, you have basically an infinite ability to use that tool. There was a push, this very strong push to session in the Senate to end that and to say, "For every project, you've got to come back and seek another piece of legislation." That bill ultimately died. And in fact, it sank the hotel bill that would have authorized new cities. We pass one of these every session to authorize new cities, much like we passed yours back in, I believe, 2007. And so the hotel financing program that we currently have and that the city is benefiting from, I think is going to be looked at very carefully during the interim by probably both chambers. And so stay tuned for an active interim with regards to that tool.
Brandon, could we expand on that, on our existing hotel?
You can. More or less. I mean, all, you know, all questions like that, I like to, you know, put a little, well, let's, you know.
About to look at.
Yeah, take a closer look at it. I don't want to give ad hoc legal advice, but yes, more or less.
We all like to give our own legal advice.
I'll let KO.
He all loves it.
Yeah. Any questions about the hotel stuff? Kurt, do you have anything to add, sir?
On the hotels?
Or anything?
They're getting too expensive.
Yeah.
No, I'll just say a couple of things. One, I just want to thank y'all for having us up here and giving us nearly an hour to visit with you. We could talk days about it because we're into this stuff. But if you have any questions, be sure and talk to us or ask us or go through anybody that's here. And secondly, I wanted to just extend my appreciation to folks that came down there to Austin a lot and helped Chris from staff to council members. And the mayor, of course, has shown great leadership over the years on this. Sometimes this seems frustrating, and it is frustrating, not only for us, but for y'all too. But, you know, at the end of the day, the cities continue to be the major drivers of whatever economic miracles we have around here, because y'all are closest to the ground to where you decide whether or not a bathroom goes in a park, which is good. And that's where it needs to be, and it doesn't need to be from Austin. But we continually see the need for input from people that are affected by this legislation. It's not real effective sometimes down there to say the cities don't like this. It's much more effective that the neighbors don't like this and the locals don't like this. So sometimes you've got to put on a different hat and a different face and identify some real champions to advocate for us in Austin. The other is that we, the delegation that we put up here, you know, y'all know that delegation, standouts on there. They're going to go on to continue to run, maybe even for higher offices, a couple of them that were on there. But we certainly need to continue those relationships, and we need to continue those relationships with other cities. A lot of these issues got fractured this time because some people had already done, like ADUs, or some people had already done certain other things. So they didn't care, and they got like 38 members in a delegation. So, speaking of City Houston. So that makes it a little bit more difficult. So I just, we've always done, we've always done very good there. The other thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, John Weest, I hear he's not maybe coming back. And John has done an excellent job for y'all over the years. We've enjoyed working with John. And I just want to say publicly, from focused advocacy, how much we appreciate him.
Questions?
Brad?
So without going too deep into SB 15, 840, is there any chance I can volunteer the mayor to have an audience with the governor to talk about some of those things? Like, is there any chance we could get in front of him? I hope you're not going anywhere.
I'm not.
So, or whoever, but I think that would be our best chance, because to your point, SB 15 and 840, we're, Irving is a big part of the Texas miracle. The governor's been here on several projects. Goodbye to those projects. I mean, you're going to get, now, I questioned KO the constitutionality of those two for some similar reasons to the Death Star Bill, that they invade Home Rule Charter, they invade equal protection and a variety of things. They apply just totally differently and are exempt, a lot of cities, as you point out, from that. But those are very important, and I don't think positive developments, particularly, again, we're not stakeholders, I get that, I guess, but we should be. And it shouldn't be just written by developers who, why are all these cities not approving all these apartments and tiny homes? Like, why might that be? And so it is local to the, to our communities, but I think those are two very important bills. Was talking to RTC, I pointed those out, that Michael's population estimates are going to be way off. Air attainment's going to be way off. Infrastructure, mobility, transits, going to be way off if all these things come to pass. And SB 15 itself has this big lead-in introductory paragraph about housing organizations. But then when you get into meat of it, you're not limited to housing organizations to build that. It says either individual or housing organization can sue. And kind of lost in the mix, I just keep reading, and Marcus noticed, they're taking out sovereign immunity anywhere they can, anywhere they can sneak it into bills with this, the new initiative referendum ballot language, a variety of things. I think in maybe SB 15, they're removing sovereign immunity, requiring mandatory fees, a variety of things. So, and not that anyone here wants to do anything crazy, you know, we've approved and probably one good one on the horizon, multiple high-quality dense units. And as the mayor's pointed out in his letter, we're, we've got a lot of multifamily. We are pretty dense. And so is there a shot for us to get in front of the governor, maybe to advocate in these waning days? There may not be a great chance to veto, but.
So a couple of things. One, we certainly can ask and try. I will tell you, you know, the city, under the mayor's signature, has submitted a request to the governor to consider veto for it. We've also provided, as of this week, we received a map, I guess, that you all have received, that showed its potential impact or application to the city. I think that was very useful information. It's candidly, I wish I would have had it for the committee hearings. It is very impactful to do that. So we have put some stuff forward. I do know there are some other groups that have. Kurt mentioned, let's just focus on Senate Bill 840 for a second. One, that was one of the bills that was in that larger package of housing affordability and availability. And I think that y'all have been shared the committee hearings for that bill. We had them clipped, so y'all can see them. I sat through it. It was actually going on the very night that the DART bill was happening. I was bouncing back and forth that evening. We were in hearing. And so, at least in the House. And what you will see is the advocacy groups, and there are 41 people, it happened to be 41 in both the Senate and the House, that signed up. And it is a very diverse group that said, in essence, cities are the problem. And they weren't saying Irving, but this bill got squeezed down to that. And they were as diverse to start off with the Catholic Diocese, to the Texas Home Builders, to the Texas Restaurant Association, to the Texas Farm Bureau. I don't know what we've done to the farmers with regards to multifamily, but they were signed up on the bill, too. And I can't, I mean, you know, and that is, if this wasn't so serious, it would be funny. But that's the group of people that were there advocating. We also, I would, it would be remiss for us not to say this. There was a new entrant over the interim that spurred a lot of these proposals. It's a group that was called Texans for Reasonable Solutions. They're on the witness list for both of these bills and testified for them. They showed up on the scene last session. We're kind of this grass-tops advocacy group. And it is a very wealthy individual that lives in Austin, a billionaire, that his wife runs this group. And they've brought these proposals, initially from California, for density issues and have proposed them to the legislature. And they've been very successful. They were in times invited. They were in times invited to be on panels when cities weren't in the interim to push these proposals. And we talked about developing champions, that's really what we need to do. We didn't have any champions in land use. In the Senate, our, the Senate, most of these bills go through Senator Paul Benton Court in the Local Government Committee, and they go through the House Land and Resource, which, again, we had a new chairman, I think he did very well, but it's just a fact. Chairman Gary Gates is also in a multifamily business and had a, and from that space. And so, he has a different view on cities' role. And we didn't have a lot of people standing up saying, you know what, cities are protecting the citizens, these neighborhoods. We did at the end of session, there were some members that made a fight on fifteen and others to make that case, that it's not cities that you're taking these tools away from, you're taking them away from local communities. Ramon Romero from Fort Worth made very passionate speeches at the end on Senate Bill fifteen with regards to that from Fort Worth. I say that to say, that's what we need to do over the interim if we're going to try to change this tide. Kurt mentioned just saying that cities are against something just doesn't carry the weight in today's world. We have to pattern that with other people, its impact on neighborhoods, its impact on groups, and highlight that for them. Otherwise, we're fighting, and I would say, y'all's, those groups that I mentioned, that all have chapters, the Restaurant Association and others, they don't interact with y'all at the same way at the local level that they do in Austin through their state associations. And some of that needs to be checked, and it's a big product of why some very aggressive agendas get brought against local governments at the Capitol. And that's, that's where we are in that space. But to the point of can we try, absolutely, we can make that request. The governor's office, you know, during this time is going through review of these bills, and so it is what it is. But we have hand-delivered that, those notices. I would also note on eight forty, we mentioned, there were communities that did not view this bill that poorly, that are affected by it, that are in that list, Houston in particular and Austin in particular. And those are big delegations. And Austin was used as an example by the authors of this bill to say, look, even Austin doesn't oppose this sort of approach because of their history with land use, being aggressive on land use items. And so, you know, that's, that was kind of the reality. We had cities that were also in this area kind of split on the approach as well, so.
Yeah, I. I'm mad, I would just say that they can, they can do that, they can, they can do that themselves, they don't need to have the state impose that on everybody.
And Austin had, and that was what was used.
Then Austin be Austin, and leave everybody else alone.
And we did attempt to do, to make that case, too. Austin certainly didn't advocate for the bill, but that was, the authors of the bill used it. And I will say that Senate Bill eight forty, unlike some of the others, also had very tremendous bipartisan support. And part of that, and I would tell y'all, is because the way that y'all are viewing it in the very much, how is this going to be applied, what's this going to mean in the real world? Unfortunately, that discussion doesn't get to really be had at the Capitol. It wasn't, it didn't occur in that committee hearing at one o'clock in the morning that we were talking about. And that's because this bill ultimately was proposed as this allows empty office towers in large urban areas to be converted to apartments. That's what this bill was sold on. It was changed to very much, as it got voted out of committee without a lot of discussion, to be about allowing multifamily and apartments to go in a lot of different zoning classifications with no restrictions. And that's what it became. But the narrative, that it was still discussed and debated on, without getting into the minutia at the level that y'all have, was this was about letting empty office towers that weren't going to have workers in it be converted to apartments. And it was very hard for us to break that and try to get them to say this is far beyond that.
Al?
HFC, I saw that, you know, we got hurt on that one.
Yes, sir.
And on the timing. Or, is that dead, or is that?
No, it passed. It's effective law now.
It will be.
House Bill twenty-one was signed by the governor on May twenty-eighth, and so it prohibits traveling HFCs, any new ones, and it sets a two-year sunset on those that were granted to where they have to come into the taxing jurisdictions that they're located now in, for example, here, and seek your approval, unless those existing ones are sunsetted after two years. So it was, it ended up as a very much positive bill for the local governments. And then, and the litigation, and there is active litigation that were being, there were temporary injunctions granted to a number of cities in the past week that removed temporary, well, TROs that moved to temporary injunctions for a host of cities under old law, saying that they never should have been granted even prior to the passage of HB twenty-one.
That's interesting. Leadership, my assumption of the House leadership being Speaker, y'all don't see any tea leaves that there may be a move to change that? Or you think he's going to? Seems like he and the lieutenant governor are doing the dance together.
He certainly, he probably has solidified his, his position even more. I mean, a lot of things can change in the political world, but certainly he seems to have more solidified his position as leader in the House.
The other one that we talked about for a minute on there was moving all of the elections, especially us on the municipal level, all to November. Y'all think that that's going to crop up again, I guess?
Absolutely. It was, it was very near passing this time.
Yeah.
It was in multiple places, that was probably a provision in three or four bills that moved pretty significantly through the process, some of the finance limitation bills. But yes, that, that topic and a desire to push to November will be back.
I think it was reported yesterday that, by some media outlet, that the governor made some comments along the lines of the, the higher threshold for voter approval, the two-thirds voter approval for debt, and moving everything to November is going to be his top priority. I think that the governor and certain pockets of legislature feel like, they, they're, you know, on the hamster wheel with property taxes. They buy them down, and then they go up, and they buy them down, and then they go up. So I think that there's going to be a strong push next session to really continue to clamp down on property taxes.
Yeah. Brandon, you just might want to mention, the governor, when he passed vouchers, or the legislature passed vouchers, he said, I'm going to move on now to really try to lower property taxes by limiting those local governments and cities from raising property taxes. That's where the twenty percent debt ratio to revenue came from. That's where the two-thirds came from. It'd been discussed before, but he adopted those. So when he comes up here and talks to y'all, talk to him about how that impacts your ability to develop this community, because it's, it's pretty damn, excuse me, important, those bills. And, but he has to hear that from people.
Well, I assume that we got to start early sometime next year before we get caught, because, but it always happens, because I know, let's say during the session, they'll probably start already dropping bills, probably, what, ninety days prior, somewhere in that.
November before.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So they're, they're sitting early, so I guess we need to get our oar in the.
All interim. I would say these topics that we're talking about, they will be the subject of committee hearings and activity around the Capitol between now and particularly in the year twenty-two-six, when we have a more normal interim, if we don't have a bunch of specials. Kurt mentioned that debt limitation and those finance limitations, and it's consistent with this move to November for bond elections, those were all in the same bills. The reason that HB nineteen and those didn't pass ultimately was that cities statewide, and particularly where on those committees that had members on that, on the Ways and Means Committee, were able to get private industry, the bond councils that y'all work with, your engineering firms that benefit, all the building trades that y'all work with that depend on public projects, realized that that should have been their most serious bill to consider. And they engaged quickly after they realized that voter approval and other, there was no way around that twenty percent limitation, and that that would stop all public projects that were in the works. If you had cities, which I will just say, a sampling of our twenty-three cities, all but two were over that number. And so, and so, it, it is a very serious topic. Those topics, I will say to your point about starting early, is developing those allies and working the interim process to the best of our abilities.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Has there ever been a group that's thought about really looking at the appraisal districts? Because that's really where the, where the nuts and bolts of this are. I mean, maybe that's something we, as a region, need to come up with, Brad, that'll give you a good project to, since you're giving me one, I'll give you one. Hey, we can, we can bring some people together to really, because that's really the nuts and bolts of it, and it's really, I'll get myself in trouble for saying this, but really, it's driven by the realtors. Because if, let me tell you how much you can get for your house, because I just sold this one for this much. Oh, we got, you know, now, if we had the same restrictions on residential sales as we do on commercial sales, where you didn't have to disclose the cost of the sale of the home, you would see less of that. I mean, I think there, you know, there's ten thousand smarter people than me that could figure out something here, but I can't imagine that if you had the same situation, because we, all we can do is hearsay. I mean, we can, we can see the, the Williams Square, we think sell for three, four hundred thou, for three or four hundred million dollars, and be on the tax rolls for eighty-nine, or things of that nature. And so, there's, there's just two different sets of how the appraisals work. And I think if the, if the state was really serious about controlling this, and yet letting us have the ability to provide the services that the residents need, the roads, the fire, the police, the libraries, the rec centers, the, everything that we need, they, that would be the way to handle it. It would be to get a handle on how much they keep raising these things, because I can tell you that this craziest thing I've ever seen is them to say, well, your house value is this, but it can only appraise it at this, and we can only raise it a certain percentage, so we're going to raise your taxes that percentage till you catch up to what the value is, which is usually four or five years before they get to that. And then by that time, they're going to raise the value again so that they do the maximum that they can, can do. But until you get a handle on the, on the real estate part of it, where everybody, you know, I mean, how many times can you go on your phone and say, you want to know what your house is worth? This is what houses are selling for in your neighborhood, so this is what your house is now worth. I mean, so all of a sudden, you know, that's what your house is worth, whether somebody will buy it or not, you know? And so, until we get a handle on that, I think that you can squeeze the cities down to where we don't have anything, we don't even have enough for police and fire, if that's what they want to do. But the reality of it is, until they get a handle on the cost, or the appraisal values and the costs we have to pay, it's not going to make any difference. John, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, I turned it on while you were speaking. Just wanted to piggyback on that and bring up one of Brad's favorite anecdotes or remarks. So I was, I was reading through the constitutional amendments that are going to be on the ballot in November, and I saw S J R eighteen, the constitutional amendment prohibiting the imposition of a tax on the realized or unrealized capital gains of an individual, family, estate, or trust. Does that include taxation on the unrealized value of your home?
This bill, or this constitutional amendment, was proposed as capital gains, and it certainly hasn't talked about your gains, that you had unrealized property value gains prior to sale. That wasn't discussed as part of it.
I can't imagine why not, because having an appraisal district just say that your house is worth more, and then you get taxed more on it, that is a taxation on unrealized gains.
Yep.
So it seems to me that if they're serious about prohibiting that, they should look at how that's already been done by the appraisal districts.
I don't disagree there. And certainly, there were, out of the nine thousand bills that were filed, a lot that were aimed at appraisal reforms of some nature. Of course, we've, I will call it an experiment with the elected members that we've had with that change that happened. But there has not been a heavy look at, and a serious look at systemic reform to that process. It's been more about limitations. So, don't disagree that that's a major part of the discussion. And some of, just on this notion of housing affordability and availability and kind of what's led some of that, I will tell you, having sat through all these hearings, not once has it been asked, well, what's the margin on these homes that are being built? What's the land acquisition? What's the property casualty insurance increases? And none of those things were really discussed. It was always about this portion that cities control, our regulatory fees and time that we impose on that process, that has been labeled the bad actor.
Believe me, there's not going to be a house built in this city for under four hundred thousand dollars, no matter how big a lot it's on.
Correct.
Brad? Oh, I'm sorry, John, were you?
Brad's first.
Yeah, I thank you for that comment, John, and that's why I say the idea of the phantom tax nationally receives so much derision, and yet that's exactly what we do to our real estate. So I always say, I could solve this problem for the governor, is everybody, whatever you buy it at, you get taxed at that with some reasonable increment that they set. And then, when we set the tax rate, it would have real meaning, whether we needed to go out to the voters or wanted to go out, and most likely they'd pass it. But that is a broken system, and then think about this, you'd put all the appraisal districts out of business, where you'd have all these unelected people who just randomly, like in ten years have doubled the price of my house, and I want to stay there, I don't want to move. And so, it is a phantom tax, and this is why people get frustrated. They keep coming back, and these exemptions don't ever mostly seem to apply to me, although the homestead is good. But I think, you know, when you, when you minimize a tax for somebody, somebody else is paying it, if we want to do the same level of service, and we just consistently hear from our chiefs, from our staff, from our residents, the, the level that they want. It's, it, there's not a big disparity here. There's some people who would cut it to the bone, but I almost kind of wish they did that one big bill, because it'd be a train wreck, and then they'd have to fix it. I don't wish they did it, but it would really, I mean, we could just shut down, and then you'd have the city governments close, and it's, good luck, no services, no water, no sewer, and then we'd see how things would operate. But on the property tax side, it's, it's very solvable, there's just too many constituents, and I'd agree with you, Mayor, it makes no sense to have transparency on one and not the other. And so, there ought to be a set rate, and we, it's America, when you buy something in a arms-length transaction, that should set the value. And I get it, it's, it may, you may be able to sell it for more someday, but that's not what the seventy-year-old lady who's trying to live the rest of her life in the House is doing. So, yeah, it's a challenging session, there's always, it seems like we dodged some really bad bullets, but we got hit by some more than usual, I guess, or, but I think that's a solvable problem, and the solution's much more simple, that would eliminate tons of bureaucracy, in my opinion, and then you just have transparency and taxation. And/or, use sales tax from donor cities to defray the property tax. Because if we got, out of the six and whatever, six and a quarter, is it? Six, if we got a penny or two that, you know, we, we could cut it in half, Chris? That'd be some nice savings.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would just mention, the appraisal, ever since I got into this stuff in nineteen eighty-six, we've, since the pivotal. we've, since the Pivoto bill in the early 80s, appraisal tax reform and property tax reform, and the, the largest stakeholder in the appraisal business is the state of Texas. They depend on the increase in the appraisals, and that's why we have a cities, I mean, we have a statewide program. Most people think somehow we set property values, the cities, or the counties, or school districts, but it's a statewide system, and it's dependent on hitting a certain percentage of what the state thinks the market value is. And it's built into the school finance system. And, you know, one way, somebody suggested the other day, I can get rid of property taxes, the state fully fund public schools. That would go a long ways. That would go a long ways. Is that going to happen? No. You saw Snapper's figure up here, $51 billion in property tax relief? Maybe, but it, it's somewhere in there. But that's, that's, that's from 17, 19, 21, 23, 25, going forward. And it's kind of a cumulative effect, and we just keep paying down and buying down this stuff, but we never get to the solution. And it's a personal opinion, but I think it's fairly accurate.
For your purpose and representing us, I mean, that the property tax is actually we, we need, so, and we're talking about all the needs that we have here in the city for roads, and police, fire, libraries, amenities, whatever else. And so, yeah, the, the appraisals and the property tax system is, is very expensive for all of us. It's good to see homeowners being benefited with these increases in the exemptions, but, but as far as the city of Irving is concerned, we, we do need the tax revenue, so reducing the ability to, for us to get that, it would actually hurt our interests. And, but yeah, like Brad is saying, you look at how much money the state gets on sales tax, and we give all that to the state, and that really, if we could capture that and keep it here, which is the way it should be, then we wouldn't be so dependent upon those property taxes, and maybe people should, would get relief that they deserve, it would benefit everybody then. And then, of course, Dart is a, is a huge problem, too. But, you know, we, and I know we all have our individual feelings about the property tax, but for the city's interests, we, we need that revenue.
Yeah, and generally, of course, what we're, kind of back to that priorities page, we advocate and certainly follow y'all's direction, but for y'all to have that tool to just set your, and manage your budget, and that includes setting your tax rate, having that discretion, not having arbitrary numbers being placed on that, that, that aren't consistent with what your costs are that you got to manage. And if there is a change to the property tax system, to make sure that, again, local governments are empowered with the tools to set these tax impositions at the level and service level that, that your community supports, not, not to have that done in Austin.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Safe trip back. So do we want to take on Senate Bill 840 next? You guys, Phillip's got a whole program here on Senate Bill 840. If you feel like you haven't heard enough about this. Y'all take care.
Yeah, Dennis just announced his retirement just now. I just got an email like right when we all were saying goodbye. Yeah. Hey, thanks, bud. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor. Philip Sanders, Assistant City Manager. I want to preface my comments by saying I am not an attorney. There are, this is going to be kind of an overview of Senate Bill 840, what it does, what it could do. There may be questions regarding the nuanced interpretation, or what are our legal options? I, I think those are probably good legal questions that should be, I, I think Kay and his team would be in a position to answer, and probably maybe provide you legal advice in a, in a closed session if it's your desire to, to do that. But certainly, we'll, we'll, we'll go through the overview. This is a massive preemption bill that is probably the largest removal of city land use authority that I can recall in my career. It, of the 1,200 cities and towns in Texas, it affects 19. There are two cities in Texas with a population over 150,000 that are exempt from this because they're in smaller counties. Those are Amarillo and Laredo. You'll notice that the areas where growth pressures are greatest, where people are moving in largest numbers, are the suburban communities surrounding the large metropolitan areas. Most of those cities are not in this list. So the aim of the goal, or the goal of the bill to provide housing, or increase the quantity of housing, or the affordability of housing, targets areas where the growth, misses the areas where growth pressure is the greatest, which is ironic. When I walk through the bill, there's three distinct subchapters of this new chapter 218 that they've created. Subchapter B, which is where the regulations start, has two main sections. The first is probably the biggest part of the bill, which is a allowing multifamily and mixed-use projects in certain non-residential zoning districts. And I've included a quote from the bill, which basically says that regardless, the city shall allow mixed-use and multifamily in any zoning classification that allows office, commercial, retail, or warehouse, or mixed-use development as an allowed use. So anywhere we allow office, retail, any type of commercial, any type of warehousing, now we have to allow multifamily or mixed-use development. I have a map that kind of illustrates what that looks like for Irving. We may not require any kind of discretionary approval beyond, well, really, any additional discretionary approval to authorize these projects. Not a variance, not a special exception, we can't require a conditional use permit in permitting these types of projects in zoning districts that allow those commercial uses. There are some exemptions. The preemption doesn't apply to a zoning classification that would allow a heavy industrial use, that's a defined term, which we'll talk about here in a minute. Doesn't allow or apply to land located within 1,000 feet of an existing heavy industrial use, or within 3,000 feet of an airport or military base. Also includes an area designated as a clear zone or an accident-prone zone, those are typically zones associated with airports. So the definitions of heavy industrial use, it's a very specific definition, I think, as we go to apply this bill, should it become law, we would have to review each application on a case-by-case basis to see if the heavy industrial exemption would apply, whether it is in an area that allows heavy industrial use, or whether it is located within 1,000 feet of an existing heavy industrial use. We'd have to look at this definition that has some subjective terms like hazardous condition, or noxious and offensive, and determine based on normal meaning of those words if those properties would be exempt. Mixed-use residential is specifically defined as at least 65% residential use. If you have a project where 65% of it's residential, it meets the threshold as a mixed-use residential and can be in any of the zoning districts we previously mentioned. Multifamily is just defined as three or more dwelling units within one or more buildings on a site. So this is a pretty broad definition of what multifamily is. It's more broad than what we currently define multifamily, but that becomes the de facto definition in state law.
Next page.
So, the bill does not apply to areas within 3,000 feet of an airport. This is just a map showing DFW Airport and the 3,000-foot buffer. So the non-residential districts that fall within this 3,000 feet would not be able to include multifamily as a matter of state preemption. This is the map that I think was referred to earlier. The map on the left shows the areas in green, which are areas where we currently allow. I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman.
The quick question is the 3,000-foot buffer, is that related only to this bill? So if we had, if there were properties within that already, that are already zoned?
It basically says that the preemption that's granted by this statute doesn't apply if you're within 3,000 feet. So, the, in the map on the left, the areas in green are areas where we currently allow as a matter of right, a multifamily and/or mixed-use development. The areas on the, the map on the right adds to that, the 3,000-foot buffer, and, and the areas in red are zoning districts where we currently allow retail, commercial, industrial types of uses, where under this bill, you would now have to allow by right, multifamily. Little context, the areas in green are about 3,000 acres, a little over 3,300. The areas in red constitute 10,600 acres, in addition to the 3,300 acres that are in green. So if you, you kind of want to follow that line of logic to the point of absurdity, if you have 10,000 acres, and you're required to allow 36 units per acre, which I'll describe later in the bill, we can't go less than that, and you have 2.68 people per household, that puts you at about, almost 300, well, 360,000 units, times 2.68 persons per household, per unit, that's just shy of a million people, if you built this all out in multifamily. Now, of course, that's absurd. It's, we're not likely to build the entire red area out in multifamily, but when we do land use planning, infrastructure planning, transportation planning, we typically will think about worst-case scenario. If this develops at the maximum density that it could, what do we have to have in terms of water, sewer streets? Clearly, we didn't build Irving with the idea that there would be a million people more than the little over 300,000 that we anticipate at full build-out. It's kind of like, if, if I can use a crude analogy, having a refrigerator, an icebox, where you have a little place in the bottom of the refrigerator for ice cream, and then there's, everybody wants ice cream, so somebody comes along and says, your entire refrigerator has to be open for ice cream. Well, the refrigerator isn't going to keep the ice cream. Doesn't matter, people want ice cream, you have to make your land available for that. Now, that's kind of a little absurd analogy, but that's, in essence, what has happened here. There is a demand for additional housing, and so, an overreaction, in my opinion, was to say, well, we're going to allow it everywhere, and we'll just see what happens. The second part of Subchapter B is a broad preemption of existing multifamily regulations. So in addition to requiring multifamily in non-residential zoning districts, the law says that for all areas that you have either, that we're opening up or existing areas, we're going to limit how you regulate multifamily. We're going to limit your caps on density, so that in no case could you have, could you limit a multifamily development to less than 36 units per acre? Or whatever the highest you allow in the city? That's a very interesting term that has some implications for us, but certainly no more or no less than 36 units per acre, which is where I get my 36 times 10,000 acres. We could not limit height to less than 45 feet, so they would cap that, which is four stories-ish or more, or whatever the maximum height for the district is, if it happens to be in one of these non-residential districts. We couldn't limit setbacks to less than 25 feet, or whatever is more generous if you're in one of these commercial, retail, or warehouse districts. We could not require more than one parking space per dwelling unit. So if you have a three-bedroom apartment, husband, wife, two teenagers, you might have three cars, you get one parking space for that unit. At least that's all we could require, which is less than, in for practical terms, what the demand might be for a multifamily unit. Could not require structured parking. Cannot have any restriction related to the relationship between the amount of floor area in the development and the land area. It's typically called floor area ratio, which is a common measure used in land use planning to regulate density overall. They've said that you cannot use that. And furthermore, that a building permit or other authorization that's required for the construction of a multifamily project anywhere in the city has to be approved administratively if it meets the city codes, subject to chapter, this new chapter 218, with no further action by the governing body. It is Irving's practice to require for most new multifamily developments that aren't, well, even in TOD, there's a second step they have to go through, we require a multifamily concept plan. Sometimes those are handled at the same time the zoning case is, but they're really distinct actions. This would strip the ability of the city to require a multifamily concept plan, and in addition to the zoning. So if they have the zoning, any of this zoning, they can go straight to building permit. Subchapter C adds some preemptions for certain non-residential-to-residential building conversions. This is not every conversion, it is restricted to only certain types. To be preempted under this area, you would have to have, did I skip a slide? You would have to, a building would have to be less than five years old, or excuse me, more than five years old, and at least 65% of the building and each floor is being proposed for conversion. If that's the case, if you have a conversion that looks like that, then the city could not require any kind of traffic study or traffic impact analysis, or any kind of construction or payment of a fee to mitigate traffic effects. So if you're taking an office building and adding 300, 400, 500 residential units to the office building, you couldn't do any kind of analysis or require any kind of traffic mitigation. Could not require additional parking, whatever parking lot existed in that office building or retail strip center, whatever the case may be. Because remember, this is not just office buildings, it's retail buildings, it's warehouses. Warehouses are typically parked at one space for 1,000 square feet, and so, if that happens to be the parking that's there, we couldn't require any more. Now, the developer could build more if they so choose, but they wouldn't be required to. We could not require utility improvements beyond what is needed for the minimum capacity to serve the building that's being converted. So there, at least there's a recognition that residential units use a lot more water and sewer capacity than office buildings or retail stores. So we would be able to take a look at that and say, do we have the capacity in the system to serve that demand that's being created? But we could not apply any rule or ordinance related to the exterior or interior design of the building, including establishing space dimension requirements for the apartment units themselves. They did add a section that said that we could not charge an impact fee on the land unless that land was already subject to an impact fee before a building permit was filed for the conversion. This is a very odd addition to this bill. I'm not sure it means what, I'm not sure when they wrote it, they, it, they thought it means what it, I think it means, but we have adopted impact fees a year ago, all of the land in Irving is subject to an impact fee, so I don't know that this affects us unless somebody has a different creative reading of what that means. Councilman.
Shouldn't it be the opposite? What I'm, what I'm reading is, if you've already charged them an impact fee, you can charge it again. But if you didn't, you can't.
Yeah, I, I don't know what they were attempting to do here. I think they were attempting to provide broader preempt- I think they were attempting to provide broader preemption of impact fees than what I think this actually does. Essentially, what we would do in an office conversion, we would look at the increased demand from traffic, water, and sewer on the system based on the types of meters or the trip generation that results from the new development, and then charge an impact fee proportional to the increased demand on the system. That's what we would do, and I think we still have that authority because our impact fees obviously predate a building permit tied to a conversion. So really, interesting thing they threw in there, but they threw it in. The state did expressly preserve some local authority. Very grateful. We are still allowed to apply the city's short-term rental regulations to multifamily or mixed-use developments. We're still allowed to enforce water quality regulations that the state and federal government require. Thank you. We're still allowed to implement a voluntary density program or other voluntary program that is less restrictive. Thank you. And we are still allowed to implement or enforce the following regulations that are generally applicable to all other developments in the city, including building codes, water and sewer access requirements, again, subject to what 218 limits us to do. We're allowed to still require stormwater mitigation, regulations, and also regulations related to historic preservation, protecting historic landmarks and historic districts. We don't have any formal historic districts or historic landmarks in Irving, so I don't know that the impact of that is significant for us. There is a companion bill to House Bill, Senate Bill 840, called Senate Bill 22477. These are nearly identical in verbiage. There are some subtle differences, but the structure of them is nearly identical. They affect the same sections of the local government code, and they both passed. And the legislative intent of 2477 says that, look, this one's not going to go into effect unless 840 passes, and if they do, then we'll get together and harmonize them somehow. And if there is an irreconcilable conflict, then 840 would control. So we focused on 840 as the bill that we're concerned about. As mentioned, the bill is pending signature by the governor. It will become law on September 1st if it is not vetoed by the 22nd. We've done a cursory view of our existing multifamily regulations. There are some areas where we believe they're likely not preempted, designing access, internal traffic circulation, and development, locations of parking in relation to the street, screening, locations of accessory building, accessory structures like pools, storage dumpsters, landscaping, tree preservation, and then screening requirements adjacent to single-family residential. We believe that those types of regulations we can still enforce, in addition to open space requirements, including requirements for usable open space, which we currently have. We have had some healthy conversations in review between Jocelyn and her team and the city attorney's office, reviewing this bill a number of times, trying to understand its full implication. There are some options, as I said before, if Kayo may want to provide some legal advice related to those, that I'll defer to him and the council.
Yeah. Kayo, if you want to go ahead and give us some parameters, and then we can go into executive session on some of the more detailed questions. We also have the DART and the Mayor Pro Tem and the Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. That can be, all three of those handled in the executive session.
Mayor, just to confirm, just particularly for the folks in the back that are helping us with the recording of this meeting, is the intent to come back out and cover the other two? Are you okay with those two?
We're going to push the other two.
All right, thank you. The time is now 5:19. The Irving City Council will convene into a closed executive session. This is to receive legal advice pursuant to Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, and also to discuss personnel matters pursuant to Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074.